Hi, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of March 12, 2014. Tonight, in attendance, we have Mr. Bob Watts, Mr. Tilly Evangelista, myself, I'm Harry Lockettilia. We have Howard Snyder as our town planner, and Wendy Beaumont taking minutes. Without any further ado, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. I would like to direct your attention to the seat immediately to my right. The seat is empty tonight. That is because Mr. Christopher Rich has passed away. I'd like, at this time, if I could, if you'd all indulge me and the board to observe a Thank you, everyone. Mr. Rich will be missed in many, many circles in Georgetown. He was a very, very good friend of mine, a good friend to everyone on the board, and on several boards, and he will be missed. And knowing him, I would know he would want us to continue with tonight's business. And with that said, I will accept a motion to accept the minutes of February 26th, 2014.
So moved.
Until he makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Any corrections that haven't already been made, additions, et cetera? You've got our comments, right?
All comments are included.
Yes.
Are we okay? Good to go, Bob?
Yes.
I'm going to call the question to accept the minutes of February 26th, 2014. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And next would be, if we could, let's square up the, well, I'd like to mention something here. I'll take it a little bit out of order. With the passing of Mr. Rich, chapter, Mass. General laws require certain timelines and things such as that be done, as unpleasant as it is. This board needs to officially notify and inform the Board of Selectmen that there is a vacancy on it. I'll accept a motion now to inform the Selectmen.
Moving. Form the Selectmen immediately of the vacancy.
Thank you, thank you, Bob, of this vacancy.
It doesn't need to be a formal letter. It can just be a simple email that I can send out tomorrow morning.
Excellent. Is there a second for that, Tilly?
Second.
Seconded by Tilly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. And you're going to send an email out to the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
And with that in mind, it's my understanding that the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board will need to come together at some point. Is there a timeline for that?
Within a week.
Within a week. So perhaps we could join the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen won't be meeting next Monday. They actually met this past Monday and the following Monday, two weeks from yesterday. So we'll have to, in that request, request that possibly the Planning Board can give them a time to meet.
Okay. And we only have one week to meet, or?
Jointly.
Jointly. I thought we had at least a month, but at any rate.
Does there need to be a quorum of the Planning Board?
Good question.
Can it be just a person meet with the Board of Selectmen?
Should be a quorum.
Yeah, the only, the only, the only thing is, the way it works is that it has to be a majority of both of the boards.
Okay.
Five, and now us remaining four, nine, total of nine. Regardless of how many people are there, you need a majority of the nine, you need five to confirm. So, Howard, let's figure it out. Hopefully that, that one week timeline will be extended, extended by rule of necessity, I would hope, and figure it all out, and email us, let us know what's going on.
Sure, tomorrow.
Great. Is, if anyone would like to make a comment or anything with respect to that? Mr. Hoover?
My name is Rob Hoover, and I just wanted to, it's rather an odd meeting tonight.
It's true.
It's rather an odd situation. I considered Chris a friend, and it's kind of strange. In any event, I've come tonight just to introduce myself again to the board. I think you all know me, except Bob. We haven't had the opportunity to meet yet. And just to officially let you all know that while I'm sitting, while I'm on the school committee, I am more than willing to, in whatever the mechanism is that you all have to go through with the Selectmen, to fill the seat in whatever format for my friend Chris. And that I've also pulled papers prior to for Tim Howard's seat that was up. So that's, that's what I'm here for, just to officially introduce myself to you and to let you know that's what.
And you served on the board before, right?
I was on the board for six or seven years. I had the opportunity to serve with these wonderful folks, was chairman for a number of those years. That's correct. That's correct.
We made some good decisions in those years.
We did. We did.
I'm glad you came up and stepped forward.
Thanks for stepping up, Bob. Appreciate it.
I care about the community a lot.
I know.
We all do. We all do.
The school committee is a pretty busy committee.
Okay, and thank you. And we're going to include you in all of this, because you seem to be key to it at this point. And we'll figure out what the technical, legal mechanics of this whole process are. And thanks for stepping up, Bob.
Thank you for letting me.
Thank you. We're going to go to the first thing on the agenda, which is correspondence. Howard, why don't you walk us through this, please?
Well, there's a baker's dozen of correspondents. I'll just highlight the ones.
Well, the first four seem to be just notices under special permits from other towns?
Right. We have a letter from H.L. Graham, which is site review report and response letter regarding Sixth Norina Way.
Is that the sixth?
That's the sixth and seventh.
The fifth one is Department of Community?
Well, the D-HCD letter was sent to the Planning Board for informational purposes. The Trust and the Task Force will be taking it up. It's a letter involving confirmation and annual update to the subsidized housing inventory.
Right. Are we responsible, because we are the Planning Board, to notify them that the West Street project has not received a building permit in excess of the year since its approval? So that goes, I believe they have four units there. They need to remove those from the D-H, from the S-H-I.
We'll ask why it hasn't been removed, and the fact that it's still there and it's been so long, then maybe counting it for a particular reason. But again, it's not fully permitted, so.
Yeah. So it shouldn't be on the list?
I'm going to confirm with D-HCD why it's on the list.
Excellent, excellent. It came in as a 40B, and it did get an approval as a 40B.
A LIP, yeah.
Yeah, it was a LIP, 40.
Is it still open, that permit still open with the ZPA and the CONCON?
Don't know. I think they're still monitoring cleanup on West Street through CONCON, but I don't know about the ZPA.
I think they're done with cleanup, DEP at least. I don't know how they.
My understanding is, the way it works with.
Been going on for 13 years.
With D-HCD is that if they don't receive a building permit per se within a year of the approval of the LIP, it needs to be removed from the list. And then, at such time that they finally do get a building permit, then that building permit, the notice of that goes to D-HCD, and those, those units go on the list.
Yeah, I read that in the form, yes. That's the way it's supposed to work, but if it's still on the, our town's books as being open, it's not a closed case, it's not a closed hearing, and it's still going on, as far as I know. And that would be something that the ZPA should find out and the CONCON, because they work with the DEP, right?
The Department of Housing?
No, DEP, because the DEP was officiating with the cleanup.
Right, with the cleanup.
And they were the final say on whether it was okay to build on or not.
Okay.
Yeah. But at this point, those numbers artificially inflate the percentage.
Well, if they're removed, it'll still be over the.
Will still be over, that's my understanding. We're getting close to the 10%, though we're inching ever closer. And that's certainly a concern, because then the town's vulnerable to 40Bs. At any rate, moving along.
There's a letter from H.L. Graham on a site plan review report, and Millennium Engineering on a response letter, both for Sixth Norina Way. Those can be brought up during the public hearing. H.L. Graham, a site plan review report for 105 Rear, and Merrimack Engineering sent some response letter back. That can be brought up during the public hearing.
Is that the one in our supplemental?
No, I believe it's.
That was in the original? Okay, good.
There's a letter from H.L. Graham on the Jefferson Court, which can be brought up during the public hearing, and a letter from Butters to Jefferson Court Development for the board to consider during public hearing, about reading it in for the record. John Sosa sent an email with a brief update about his efforts at 161 West Main Street, and Park and Rec has sent in a request for extension of time, so that can be brought up during the public hearing as well.
Great. We'll move on to the vouchers, if I can have a motion for the vouchers. And the total of the vouchers? Two, seven, nine, eight dot nine zero. Is there a motion to approve that?
Oh, I see. The big one is Merrimack Valley. Okay.
Is there a motion to approve that?
A motion to approve the voucher for $2,798.90.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Any, any discussion?
I just want to summarize what was written in the planning packet about Merrimack Valley. This is our annual assessment, and just for.
I saw the letter from the Town Treasurer.
Yeah. Just for maintaining it for budget purposes, it's carrying as a line item under the Planning Board. But it's not paid out of the annual Planning Board budget.
Okay.
It's funded from a different.
How does that work?
That's kind of wack, isn't it?
Do you want to ask that question?
Yeah, shouldn't we have that on our?
It's more appropriate here than under the, under the Treasurer, so.
Maybe, maybe we should think about putting that on our budget next year when we.
Hey.
They seem to be happy with it being a separate line item, so.
As long as they get their money.
However it works, yeah. The main thing is that it happens, right? Motion made and seconded for the, prepare the vouchers, $2,798.90. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Wendy, do you have something for us to sign?
Yeah, it's being passed around.
Oh, great, thank you. Howard, one on Merrimack Valley, LTA hours for the OSRP, the Open Space Recreation Plan?
Right, that information's in your supplemental packet.
Excellent. Were you making a note to bring that up? When are we going to bring that up? At the end?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. We'll handle that at the end. And these are both from the?
Don't want vouchers for the two.
How do we get a W.B. Mason out of general funds?
That comes out of the Planning Board budget.
Okay. As long as you're, as long as that's all set with the Treasurer. And the accountant looked a little odd there. Moving along, W.B. Mason, that's done, and it is, we're 10 minutes ahead of schedule.
Wonderful.
Okay, public hearing, first public hearing. This is a continuation of the Jefferson Court definitive subdivision and special permit hearing. When was this, when was this continued from?
January 8th.
This is a special permit.
Yeah, it's a definitive subdivision with the ability for a special permit to be part of it, and the special permit's just for the court.
For the court?
Right.
Right. Do you want to ask for continuance? Your call, sir.
What, can you review what, where we stand with the?
Mullins law?
Four-member board, I guess.
It's my understanding that proceeding, you'll need a four of four vote on Jefferson Court in terms of the court, the special permit for the court. For the definitive subdivision, you'll need three of four. And right now, Tim Howard's not in attendance. He can fill a Mullins form.
So Tim hasn't missed any other hearings, right? The only one that?
No, the one that this was continued from was the, was the opening of the public hearing.
And Tim was present for that.
So he gets one Mullins?
One Mullins. And I've also put in a request for Town Council to give a finding about if we get a new member, if they can use a Mullins to review meetings prior to their election or their appointment.
Interestingly enough, to make the situation more interesting, the gentleman that was here earlier is running for Tim Howard's seat, because Tim Howard has no plans to return to this board.
So if he leaves, when is the election?
May.
Within a week of town meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, May, it's the week after town meeting. May 6th, May 5th.
We'll certainly have this wrapped up before then. So Tim will be on the board. Okay. Well, why don't, yeah, we'll, we'll.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, because the discussion's limited tonight to?
Yeah, we have a very limited discussion tonight, anyway.
Yeah, we've been able to respond to letters.
So I think we can, we can proceed. I just wanted, I didn't submit this last time, I just wanted to submit the assessor's record showing it was a two-family house at 78 North Street, so we're not increasing the number of families at all, that that was a legal two-family, per the assessors. That's the current assessor's card.
I wonder, this is exhibit one.
This is the house that's already, still standing.
Well, it's been torn down, but it's the one.
It's been torn down.
It's the one we're, we're talking about, 78 North Street. And I don't know if you want to leave, the Smiths wrote a very nice letter, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to.
Letter of support.
Add it to the record or take note of it, or?
Can we take note and enter it as, as read?
Yeah, I'll note that.
All right with everyone? That letter? It's a letter of support for?
Absolutely, yeah.
For two houses?
Very enthusiastic.
If I can summarize that.
Yes.
And was there something else that was received this evening?
What's that?
Was there something else that was received?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's the light department here.
So if we can, I think Bill wanted to respond to Larry's letter.
His comments, his review.
His comments.
Bill Holt, right?
Yes. I don't want to respond to all of them, because there's, you know, there's numerous ones that can just be easily addressed by correcting the items he mentions.
Why don't, why don't we go right down it? We have Larry's comments. He's usually pretty, pretty comprehensive. We can go right through it. And if we do, it's, that's in our, in our original yellow packet, and it's about yay far in.
Is this under correspondence?
Yeah, it's actually correspondence, because it was received, it's, it starts like this.
Dated March 4th.
Yep, dated March 4th, definitive subdivision plan review report D1, Jefferson Court. Are you good with this? We all, we all quote on the same page, so to speak? Great, let's start. Larry, Larry tells us about what he did not receive and what he did receive. The plan review starts with sheet one. An easement note in the upper left-hand corner of the sheet references easements to be retained by the town of Georgetown. Although required by the subdivision regulations, this private road type development may be an exception to this requirement. Want to respond to that? And would we please note for the record that before we heard your response, Mr. Tim Howard arrives at 7:10?
45? And Bill, I've got the application and PDF that you sent, so we need to refer to this, something on the screen for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, before, prior to this, he actually said he didn't receive the documents. I know we submitted them, I don't know if I didn't get forwarded to him, but, you know, we can always get those to him. They're all available on PDF, .30, and I can send them in hard copies as well. It's all supporting documents, the different drain report, the, yeah, the drain report.
He received the drainage report.
Yeah, he didn't get the, the application permit, I guess, with the different narratives, transmittals for floodplain map, things like that, locust map. We did prepare, I don't know if he just didn't get them.
Maybe they came later.
They came as one package, so.
Interesting.
Anyway, so.
For the record, Attorney Mitchell Croner, I just wanted to refresh your memory on a few points that I guess come off of that first comment about easement note, that we've agreed this is going to be a private road, we're going to put a deed restriction in, so there'll be no municipal involvement on behalf of the town. And I'll be preparing a maintenance agreement similar to a common driveway for the owners of the two lots. The other thing I'd like to point out, that 76 North Street, we kept out of this subdivision, and it's a separate lot. In fact, it's scheduled to be sold into the, at the end of March.
So, that's this lot here?
Yeah, so Bill has a couple of points when we get to the radius, but right now, our plan is to sell that lot as a separate freestanding lot, which it is. So not part of the subdivision.
We're on North Street, this is North Street here, and this is the new, new construction for sale. Yeah. This is going to be treated as a separate lot, is what you're saying.
Right.
Okay.
So the easements he's talking about are actually on 76, which we are going to be stipulating the easements on that deed when it's sold, retained by, retained by the applicant.
Will, will 30, is this 32 or 32A?
It's 32, and we called it 32A because it's going to be changed by adding parcel 33B, which is a strip of land from 78.
33B, that, that little narrow strip there, that 10-foot wide strip there?
Yeah, that was going to be added on to that logistics little lodger. Ends up with 138 feet of frontage, as opposed to 128 feet of frontage.
Isn't there a comment there about opening that a little bit wider?
Yep, yep, and I'm going to address that.
So how will that incringe on your easement?
It won't, actually.
It won't? Okay.
But the first easement note is, is one that we typically put on for all subdivisions that says that the easements would go through town in Georgetown. Since it's going to be a private way, the easements drainage should be maintained by the two owners of the two lots.
Retained to the benefit of the two.
Right.
And is that, is there a homeowner's agreement with that, or?
Homeowner's agreement.
A homeowner's type agreement?
Yes.
Excellent, so, excellent. Okay. Is that good with, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
I've never seen that. Have you ever seen, dealt with anything like that? Or the homeowner's agreement that?
Well, it's like a common dri, like for a common driveway, you'd have to have a maintenance agreement.
The main thing is that the maintenance of this new roadway, Jefferson Court, would not be a burden to the town.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just thinking, you know, when they sell it and.
Well, as it starts to, as the years go on, two neighbors might not do a handshake agreement that, yes, it's your turn to pave it, so that'll handle that.
Your bylaw on a common driveway, again, requires a maintenance agreement, so we're going to treat it the same way as that.
In the past, with private roadways, we asked for a homeowner's agreement.
Okay, all right, maintenance homeowner's, right, right.
Are you going to bring that in?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, because we can compare it to what we.
Yeah, we like to see the wording of it.
We might have another one on file or something.
Yeah, just to make sure that it protects them. The projects in the Water Resource District, requirements for the impervious area or an open space respectively should be provided.
We can provide those, well below the maximum requirement, so I'm confident that we have no issues over that, and we'll be able to add that to the, he wanted up on the table on the left-hand side with the zoning, we'll add that in.
It's a good place to put it, when you revise the plan. Excellent. Design notes, references, access to lots 33, 33A, and 32?
We're going to eliminate the access to lot 32, as we, so discussed previously, it's, I guess it's not desirable to have a third one on Jefferson Court, it's not allowed to have a third one on this.
Where, where is the?
Previously, it was being shown here, but that's going to be removed.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, we're going to take that off and not show any access to Jefferson Court.
30?
32 or 76.
76, 32A or whatever it's called now? And where will that, where will they derive their frontage from?
Frontage is off of North Street.
From North Street, not from the court?
Not from the court.
Okay, just for the record.
Yep. Okay, 128 now, they're going to have 138 when we're done.
Understood, great. And Larry points out that any approval decision by the board should address this item, and a final plan note revised, so we'll be adding that to the.
Yes, yeah, we're taking that note that it's going to be accessed from the court lot.
Great, general design notes, references, a restriction to further subdivision and single-family home construction. Larry is concerned that we discuss how those restrictions are documented and enforced.
Again, I'll put that in the deed, that it's two single-family homes on a private way, maintained by the owners of each home. I'll put language in the deed, and I'll provide you with a more, you know, more detailed maintenance agreement to recover snow plowing and things like that.
Maintenance of the road.
And no further subdivision. Who's talking about this?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that, that could also go on the plan, just a note too, to be noted, further subdivision. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
General design note two, references, responsibility of the owner. 33 and 33A, we assume these lots will be independently owned, as such, we suggest that this note be clarified. Did you fix that, or are you?
We'll, we'll take care of that, yeah. We're going to make sure that says that the, the new owners of lots 33 and 34, because of counter, they'll be owned by Mr. DeBullo.
Okay, great.
So when he sells them, it'll be referenced that they're responsible.
Excellent, and reference the homeowner's agreement.
Exactly.
That'll all be tied in together. Yeah. Note for Howard, when he was writing up the decision, I guess from Larry, any approval decision should carry a condition that speaks to these, these notes. Waivers in variance requests, table comments. Title block layout, Larry's, Larry's giving us the, the benefit of his, of his opinion on the waivers that are being requested with pavement width and pavement thickness. He still likes three and a half inches.
Yeah, we have no problem reverting back to the required pavement width.
Yeah.
I think.
There's no point in.
We, he's.
Just, just because it's private doesn't mean it should be. Just, just because it's private doesn't mean it should be substandard to any other roadway in the town.
As far as the thickness goes, he's asking, um, suggesting we do sixteen-foot wide for the first twenty-five feet, so that two cars can sit there and pass. Which we have no objection to, I mean, that makes sense, uh, to widen it to that extent. Again, we're trying to keep it as a, as a, less, least impact as possible by having less pavement. And that's why we proposed a twelve, and I think further on, he has no objection to a twelve-foot either for fire access and for, for, you know, the other reasons. So we will definitely widen that sixteen feet at the entrance.
At the entrance, yeah.
So there'll be enough room for two cars to sit there and one to point out, one to come in, so we no backup on North Street at all, and like that, so. Which is, which is makes perfect sense, and I agree that it's desirable to do that, so we'll definitely make that change.
Especially considering it's North Street, at certain times, you might want a, well, a wider, uh, landing strip.
I mean, we don't expect a lot of traffic, but obviously, you know, you wanna make sure there's no conflict at the entrance, so.
Yeah, make it as easy as possible.
Is the board okay with that waiver from the, uh, court requirement?
We're not making any votes on any waiver.
Okay, just if there's any questions on it?
Absolutely.
On the eighteen feet?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, uh, yeah, on the sixteen feet width, right? Isn't sixteen?
Well, no, the, your bylaw, your subdivision rule calls for eighteen-foot width.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, that's all part of the special permit for the, for the courts. But, um, uh, I'll be honest with you, the sixteen-foot width, narrowing down to twelve, and then the, um, the double hammerhead, or whatever the reference is there. A lot of that depends on the, uh, the fire department. And, um, we're, we're gonna need to hear some comments from them and get something from them with respect to that.
Right.
Did, did we already get that, Howard? Refresh my memory.
No, we haven't gotten anything from, from the, officially from the fire chiefs.
Okay, um, as soon as we see those changes represented on the plan-
Get them to the fire chief.
At that point, yeah, if we could, either you do it, or-
Yep.
Howard will do it, and we'll get their comments in. I don't wanna approve anything, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving anything that, uh-
Yeah, I think later on, Larry does mention that the fire department has to review that layout.
Okay, good, great.
He had no comp- no objection to it, but as you'll see later on, but he definitely says the fire department should review it.
I think Larry's just pointing out that the word variance is used in here.
Yeah, it shouldn't be on there.
Yeah, get rid of that, we're not the, we're not the ZBA.
Um, the property line radius at the intersection, uh, we were asking for no radius at the, at the property line between seventy-six and seventy-eight. Um, I actually did speak with Larry on this, um, he mentioned the twenty-foot radius would fit. It actually will not, um, fit without going into lot seventy-six, which, I mean, a house in seventy-six property, which we're trying to avoid. I discussed it with him, you know, the reason we propose this is because we can maintain the pavement radius of twenty feet, which is required by the court requirements, sort of regulations. So there's no reason to need the radius on that side, we're not having any sidewalk or grass strip. So those are typically put in for that purpose, and since we don't have either one of those, um, we wouldn't need it. But he, he talked to me, he said, can you give us any radius? And I said, I think the twelve and a half foot radius would fit on both sides, um, which he said he'd support. So, um, he told me I could tell you that, so if you have a problem, you can call him and ask him. But that's, um, that's what he said to show is a twelve and a half foot radius on both sides. He wants them to be the same on both sides, as opposed to being different. So I think we're gonna revise our, our-
So you'll make a revision on the pla-?
Plan to show that, and then obviously Larry can make his recommendations.
Thank you.
There'll be a waiver request?
There'll be a waiver request still, but it won't be zero, it'll be twelve and a half.
Okay, so you'll, you'll amend the, uh, the waiver request details on the first page, yeah, okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Uh, we seem to be, um, Megan, it's, we were in sheet two.
Uh, I saw on G, I think.
Plan should show the location of the nearest catch basin on west side of the street, northerly of the site. I notice a, a continuing theme, Larry, you know, with the details and everything, Larry's concerned about the water. The neighbors should be concerned about the water, anyone living on North Street should be. Where, where is that catch basin again, or is it not shown on?
Actually, if you pan down a little more, no, up, up, I'm sorry, up. I mean, if you see where it says number eighty-four, it's like right at the front of that house, right there.
Okay, and you can show that a little more clearly on the next iteration, right?
I know, a detail can show that on there. Now, that's the water, obviously, all flows from the high spot, which is up near number seventy, um, which is to the south. The high spot, somewhere in, it's a catch basin right there at number seventy, so the water from there flows down to the next one. We've designed it so that we ca- we're catching the water and there's no increase in water going on to North Street, based on, uh, calculations with the infiltration trenches we designed. Uh, I think he just wants us to show it, so you can see where the water's going to once it gets on to North Street. So we're gonna add that.
And he's also looking to see the, uh, existing utility lines, the gas, the water, et cetera, et cetera?
Thought we showed the water, but I'm definitely adding. That's, uh, water, I heard the water department had some comments, and, um, I would need to add that also, the water line. They, they're requesting a certain size water line to the houses and stuff, so we'll add that on as well. We already got with us notes one, two and three, we'll revise those as he previously mentioned on sheet one.
Um, I'm looking at, um, uh, three B here, I guess it is? Yeah, sheet three, B, total frontage shown for lot thirty-three A expressed as-
Yeah.
Or the exact should be revised, can you fix something in there?
Yeah, B and C are on the, on the list of areas that shows the total frontage, and it was obviously a copied typo. It needs to be corrected.
Can you explain D and the dwelling shown for lot thirty-three?
What that actually is, is when, before we tore the house down for number, at number seventy-eight, to protect the grandfathered interests of having a buildable lot there. We, um, permitted the, the back left-hand corner, uh, lot number, uh, number thirty-three, which is the house in the back left. Yeah, we actually permitted that with a subject in a, in a building permit, just to protect our interest with the buildable lot. Um, obviously, Mr. DeWu has not built, begun construction on that, he's holding off until, you know, final decision here, so.
Can you come again, again?
Yeah, can you give that again? I'm sorry. Yeah, you already have a permit, what are you doing here? You, you got a permit for it before you had an access?
Seventy-eight, as it is, right now, the lot is an existing lot. It had a house on it. Two-family, actually. So what we did is, we had a plan showing that house in the back with the same frontage. Yep, to take, to take that, uh, thirty-three, I'm sorry.
Oh.
To take down-
This one, thirty-three.
The house that was there.
Okay.
So prior to doing the taking the house down, we wanted to protect the interest of having a buildable lot, so.
Had to close on the land also, and the people were like, oh, you're not gonna, if you're not gonna buy it.
Remember, seventy-eight's non-conforming, so once the house comes down, the clock starts running.
Ticking on that.
You mean to protect it as a two-family?
Right, well, to protect it for, for the construction of one, is a lot, for one dwelling.
For the whole thing.
But the-
As a lot.
Yeah, if for some reason, this board doesn't approve the court.
You have a fallback where you can build one home.
But he, obviously, has not, got any construction yet, he wants to wait to see what happens.
Well, that's a new one.
Where, where is this referenced? Right on the house, Harry?
It's written on the house, right there.
Oh, okay.
We do have a permit to build, to that house.
Seems to be written down there.
So you have a permit for that one on the end, right?
If they needed it.
We're actually gonna remove that note.
Take that out.
Remove that note.
This all, yeah, less confusion.
There was just so much information.
TMI.
I don't know why they, because it's so, what is the size of the lots in seventy-eight?
Oh, it's just because of the frontage.
The frontage, it's the frontage tilly.
Oh, I get it.
The frontage makes it non-conforming.
And actually, the existing house was much closer to the lot lines than the proposed house, so.
The building inspector advised before we tore down seventy-eight. It was on his advice.
No idea.
Prudent.
Just to be careful.
Just to hold on to it. As noted above, we don't support the requested waiver for no radius, we've discussed that, we've discussed that previously. Uh, sheet four, see our previous comment about pavement width, we take no objection to the twelve-foot wide paid turnaround, two, two-foot wide gravels. Also comfortable with the dimensions of the Y-type, as you said before, the board, uh, Larry's suggestion that the board see comments from the fire department, once we have a revised plan. Plan should specify the pavement return radius proposed at the intersection.
We have a twenty feet, which is required, so I'll, I'll add that on.
Okay. The sheet four, D, this sheet shows a proposed alternate drive for seventy-six. That's the one you're showing that-
We're gonna take off.
You're gonna eliminate.
Eliminate that, yeah.
Everybody good with that? Good, too?
Yeah.
Sheet depicts a proposed drainage grading, drainage easement, see previous discussion. You're gonna take care of that, that all incorporates in and ties through, right? Like it? F, we're concerned about the possibility of an increase in ponding to the west. Orient me here, Howard, north is generally in that direction.
This is west.
He's concerned about, uh, heading to Clintons and, uh, Tappan and-
Tappan, Dunn and, uh-
Uh, G, Giovanni. So he's concerned about water heading off of a-
I'm gonna actually meet with, um, Larry on all the drainage issues, and go over each of those, and propose a solution for each of these. Again, we're only-
With the LID development, you have to go over some of that.
What's that?
He will discuss with you LIDs.
Yep, and, uh, we're gonna sit down and go over all the drainage issues that he's brought up. Obviously, we've only had a week to look at this, his, his comments, and-
Sure.
I need time to-
Takes a while to draw the plans and-
Go over with him, so.
Rerun the numbers.
Hoping next week, we can sit down with him and do that, and then get a revised plan back to him, so.
Where is this wear that, that he's, he's referring to?
Um, wear is essentially just a-
Where is the wear?
Right there where the hand is, right?
Yep, right there where the hand is.
Ah, that's where it is.
Uh, and it's on both sides, it's on the north side and the south, I call it the south.
Right, right.
What all the wear is, is basically a berm, it's a, it's a, it's a hump, the water will flow over.
Oh, I think of a wear as a-
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's two different kinds, that's a shot crested wear, which is a constructed wear.
Right.
Uh, broad crested wear is basically a natural berm, and all, all dams, the top of dams are all wears. Basically, it's what it is, it's a berm, uh, it's, uh-
Very, very close to the lot line there.
Yeah, we actually put that there, is, 'cause we, we know the water will go that way, and we wanna trap the increase in the flow, so the lot, lot, lot property, it won't have any more water going on to the, what Jason properties. That's kinda what we, did not have to discuss that with him as to what his comment is.
Yeah, talk that over with Larry, 'cause this is the first time I've seen where-
I mean, we can do, we can do them longer and narrower, and they can look more like a, uh, just a little swale, a little depression, and put some-
You need a retention there, right?
Uh, that's what we're trying to avoid, is a detention area. This is, this acts like a detention area, it's just very small, 'cause there's not a lot of water going that way. 'Cause there's already water going that way, so, yeah, we're just trying to keep the increase from going that way, that's all.
My biggest concern is that you're, you're gonna be grading, I'm seeing grading there, I'm seeing excavation, uh, not only there, but, well, this is just me, this is just my thoughts about it, okay? I'm not speaking for the board here. Uh, when you're, well, it looks like you're about two feet away from the lot line there, maybe five feet, whatever. You're gonna remove a lot of vegetation, I would think that, um, usually when we do special permits like this with subdivisions, we like to see a, a screen buffer. That, uh, that building setback is usually preserved, so that you can put some kind of screening, so that-
Well, when you have the building at the setback, or close to the setback, you do have to have somewhere around the building to be able to maintain the building. Uh, so clearly, we have to trim some vegetation from the building to the property line. Now, the two-
Clearly, you have to have some kind of vegetation and some kind of visual screening for the butters. And I don't know how you're going to, um, well, you're the engineer, you'll figure it out, right?
I'm willing to do planting, you know, so I'm willing to do any planting, that's very-
Excellent, can we, can we see that on a, on a planting plan, or grading plan, some kind of planting?
Listen to what you're gonna get and-
Just wanna take one, one step back, I mean, we can do that, definitely, I don't wanna, uh, skip over that, but, uh, to the, to the berm and to the, the ponding on that side. We're not, if you go further into the, the review and part of the drainage, which is the technical part, which I think we can probably just say that we're gonna talk to Larry about that and correct the things he wants. He mentions that we don't take any credit for the roof runoff infiltrators. I didn't do that on purpose, uh, just the way I designed it, I'd like to have a little safety fact involved. So even though we're infiltrating the roof runoff into the ground, we didn't take any credit for that. Now, he's suggesting that we take the credit for that and eliminate that little, little, uh, swale on, on the side.
Did, did you do the test pits where those, where those roofs were?
We did test-
Why do I see two, oh, two and two?
Two, yeah.
Two and two?
Yeah.
And did you do any test pitting there?
We did test pitting throughout the site, it's entirely gravelly material, sandy material, um, less than two minutes per grade, it's very impervious.
So there's a very, very good chance that the roof infiltration, the runoffs will be very successful, it'll work.
And, you know, again, we get a size then- You know, right now, we're showing a ten-foot house, and the size for that, if the house changes, it'll change. I don't, I don't suspect the house will change, but if it does-
No.
You know, then we would size it appropriately for the, for the house.
Given that you're in the setbacks for more or less every-
Yeah, it really can't be any bigger.
Like inches off the setbacks, I, I would think you could figure it for the max roof.
Yeah, pretty much, that's what we did. So it would be smaller, probably, but we-
Make the numbers work, right?
Yep. So.
Yeah, and then you can take the credit for that, and maybe the, uh, maybe you can come up with a better configuration that's a little more, um, uh- Little more acceptable to the, to the butters, and a little less intrusive to the butters? Leaving a little more, leaving tree, or, or as you were kind enough to offer to add some?
I think you got the biggest trees standing already, don't you?
Yeah, I was gonna keep the sugar maples that they were there, I took the one out on this new house that I built, and I was trying to-
Something around the roadway is, I think the largest trees.
All those are still on the plan, aren't they, Bill?
Yeah, actually, the trees that say RET next to them, say RET, that RET stands for retain.
All right.
We're gonna keep that tree.
Okay. But you got quite a lot of, uh, proposed tree line here.
Yep.
And is that the same over there? I can't see a way over there.
The tree line, yep, the proposed tree line is-
There's no rock walls at all?
Uh, rock wall on the north side.
Yeah, back there.
But on this side is fences and, and, uh, on the south side and west side is fences and just tree line.
The, uh, the property was farmed for a while, right? So this isn't necessarily mature growth, but there is some existing trees.
Existing conditions, you'll see the fence lines, and there's a couple of sheds on it, and chicken poops or whatever. Yes, yeah, she, there we go.
Seed of trees down the middle.
So these are the large, mature trees there.
I'm glad you're saving those.
You can see the fence lines that are- Remains of fence lines that were there, there was, obviously, some type of a, uh, activity, farming activity there, uh, on the property. I don't know how long ago and what the, you know, what the extent of it was, but, hey, wasn't around.
That seems to touch the water. Uh, he, Larry, in G, is referring to, um, the, the technical configurations of some of these, these detention basins and the slopes of the sides. Sounds like you're gonna do a little bit of tweaking there and-
Yep, we will.
Take into account everything that he has anyway, right?
I mean, they're actually very shallow, they're only a foot deep. And so we don't have to have a lot of slope, it's gonna be like the front yards of, of those houses, a little depression, it will retain some water. But we're definitely, um, rating, as he's, as he's mentioning.
He talks about temporary basins during construction, I'm sure you can more than hear the lat.
And he also wants, uh, the bottom of these to be some stone in them, so that they'll feel very better than we can do.
And, um-
Stockpiles, we'll show those.
Yep.
And the stockpile locations.
Show where those are, right, in the grading plane or something?
Yeah, we usually show the stockpiles, and we protect them with hay bales during, during construction of the, the road.
No, is this going before the concom, this is outside the neighborhood? Okay, so you don't need to show that for them. Show for us. Uh, water department, the water service needs to be approved by the water department, got that. Wants to show, know if there's two-meter pits, or one?
Yep, there'll be two, one range.
But they don't go, they shouldn't go in the swale, I guess.
Right, right, we're gonna move those, we're gonna relocate those.
Go fix that up, right?
All right.
Proposed grading at Jefferson Court near North Street. Contour eighty-five should be redrawn to show the pavement pitching across Jefferson to the north, such that all, uh, drainages directly to the west of the curb, you're gonna fix that up, right?
I actually have it as a regular crown, he wants it to be super elevated to push it towards the direction of the-
One direction, right?
It's no problem.
Yeah, when you're, when you lose the width on those, when you get a narrow width, you really don't need that kind of crown, anyway. Uh, it was twenty feet, twenty-five foot wide, yeah. Profile view, Larry's uncomfortable with the, um, the four percent pitch of the street towards North Street. He's recommending at, at least a, uh, a two to two to, two and a half maximum. Our subdivision specs call for a one-point-two-five max, we'll need to waive whatever it is, you're gonna try to-[1741.84] Our subdivision specs call for a one point two five max, we'll need to wave whatever it is, you're gonna try to.
I'll try to get down.
Get as close as you can, right?
Yep, I will work on that and it shouldn't be an issue, I think we can do it, no problem, so.
Well, it's a benefit for you to do it.
Is that is that good for everybody?
To do the the two.
Is the pitch gonna be affected at all by the wider width? Cause right now, the pitch is four percent on twelve.
No, the pitch is is the is how it's going up into the property, so it won't it won't affect uh the width, it won't affect that. So it will be able to build the driveway, not the weir. Right, right.
Good, um uh comment about the profile view, low point elevation eighty-five two one, station one seventy. Oh, okay, small detail about how the.
Yeah, we gotta just check our grading.
Looks and that might just be a topo issue.
It might actually change a little bit when we do the change in the in the uh the grade as well, so.
Okay.
We'll definitely correct that.
We seem to see a an erratic vertical line on the east side of North Street. I don't know, I didn't see it, where is that? We're on sheet, sheet five there.
Yeah, it goes right through everything, doesn't it?
It sure does.
The heck is that? Do you love copy and paste?
It's definitely a, the way we, on AutoCAD, you draw lines and and trim and stuff, so it's probably left them on, yeah.
That's gonna be fun to get rid of, I know it is, I know that's gonna be.
Push a button.
Yeah, you watch, everything is disappeared a little, anyway, comments, um.
We're on the top eight.
Sheet six, moving along, disconnect between the pavement thicknesses, uh we talked about the pavement thicknesses, right? We're gonna stick to the to the reg. Disconnect between the infiltration depth shown on the cross section.
Yep, we'll definitely correct that, it's just a typo.
Uh crossway, roadway cross section detail showed two one inch water services and we're gonna deal with that from the water department, right? Uh proposed street trees if required, let's talk about it, we might as well, now is a good time as any, Larry brings it up for a reason. It sounds like um we're, what what is that proposed i- in this drawing and we we know we're re- we're redrawing it, what is the width of the pavement being shown there?
It's twelve feet with a two foot.
That's twelve feet.
Twelve feet.
Larry's talking about sixteen feet at the at the opening.
Yeah.
Followed by twelve.
Right.
Maybe this is a discussion for when we see the newer, when we see the newer iteration.
As far as.
Because we'll be able to see where trees may fit.
Yeah, I don't I don't think that um the trees, we're actually showing at the hand on the on the upper side of the road there, the left side is going in. A bunch of trees that are mature trees that are there, they're gonna be retained.
Retain, 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 retain.
Yep, yep. Where the house is.
When he's referring to street trees, he's referring to North Street.
Oh, is he? My goodness.
Because this is a, this isn't gonna be a street, this is a court.
Yeah, so this is a lot of trees along North Street that we're not touching, so we can add, you know, if we if we decide that we need to add one.
Well, the board requires street trees.
Yeah, I think he's talking about the this tree.
I thought it was.
But this is gonna be a court, it's not gonna be a street, I'm I'm bringing this up for discussion.
But it's a new roadway and.
What would cross section mean?
The roadway cross section detail and um.
Design.
Would be in the back.
Which is on next sheet actually, sheet six.
Well, maybe you oughta clarify that with Larry.
Yeah, um maybe this is something that will um.
So we're showing a tree, it's just a typical detail, when you show the detail, we show a potential street tree, where it would be located, so.
If required.
Yeah. Which would be made it right away.
Let's see what it looks like when uh when we redraw and we'll come back to it, we will address it then because if we blow out to sixteen feet, it's gonna change.
Sure, it's gonna change.
It's gonna look different, it's gonna look different.
I was just wondering, when we do discuss the trees, did you ever put the wells around the trees so to preserve them better, to protect them? Put the trees right in the well? Did you ever do that?
Um I've I've seen detail, I've seen detailed plans, planned details that show plantings uh the right way to, the right way to do it. And I've seen some others.
Usually brick or stone goes around it and it's embedded down.
That's usually a lid technique.
Where.
It's like a little mini.
Where you have so much water there, I think that might be a help.
Even if it was, if it was on the property, it'd even be better, I think, you know, just because I see the sidewalks are getting all the roots rooted up, you know, in that particular area. Any of the trees are tearing the sidewalks up in front of those two houses, you know, with their old trees and.
Did you ever get them infected to see if they're healthy enough to preserve or not?
Oh, oh, I didn't take any down, uh is that, any of the trees that were there? Uh no, just I see the roots tore up the hot top on the sidewalks, but you know, if you want a tree, that's fine or two, I just probably keep them off the sidewalk and not typically where the other ones are. What do you think, you know?
Well, we'll see what the plans get revised to see if there's even.
Sure, because there's trees all along, especially if it's an older.
You may not even have a forest sidewalk or a grass strip or things such as that, I mean, with the proposed roadway, so.
Yeah.
Let's see what the engineer comes up with, you'll do your magic with the with the the dimensions and everything, right?
Big trees can be, we'll discuss that, I guess I can say when we get to that point.
Absolutely, sure, uh recommend the section profile, the shallow vegetated basins be provided, that's in your detail, right?
Yeah, we gotta add a detail.
Soon to be in the detail. Comments, drainage analysis, document, uh existing contours are difficult to read. Proposed development of two lots, it's exempt from full compliance with T E P stormwater management because it's less than four lots. We did not receive calculations for the one inch runoff for the ten, ten year storm, sediment storage, gonna get that to them, right? Didn't receive calc for minimum detention of thirty-six and maximum drawdown of seventy-two hours.
We can do that.
Gonna get that to them, right?
No problem.
Okay, calculations indicate a slight increases in ponding elevation at design points A and B for the site. Uh designer may wish to incorporate the proposed roof drywells into the analysis for a more accurate representation of the proposed condition.
That's what he's saying, is to add those and it will.
Use them in your calc, right? He's talking about number six, pond one one, the way you're referencing the ponds, squaring that all up, right?
Yep.
Right.
Those we can do those once we revise.
Those are calc you're gonna get, right, which is all gonna change anyway, and he didn't get any soil tests, so I don't know if it's all right. And recommendation, finally, what he says is we recommend the planning board review and discuss these comments. And we had DM appropriate request the plans and documents be revised and I think we did that, right?
That's right, we did that.
Okay, um Howard, anything else you can think of?
Uh no, if you're done with the engineer, I've just got a couple of documents to read into the record.
Excellent.
Or make reference to.
Thank you.
Provided in the packet was a letter from the the Smiths.
Mm-hmm, saw that.
Mandering, that is exhibit number two.
Great.
And then handed to us at the meeting tonight is a a letter from Harold and Sheila Dutton on twenty-nine Pond Street.
Twenty-nine Pond Street.
Yeah, they're they're a direct of butter, we were just looking at their property, actually. This is the the Dutton handles right here, this is twenty-nine.
Okay, okay.
Is that the one with the ball field?
I I know that one.
Uh I am writing, uh I'm gonna enter this as exhibit number three. I am writing you this letter to bring to your attention that from what we heard from some of the neighbors uh that they have received notices, uh and they state they didn't receive anything, but they're on the certified of butters list. And a public hearing notice was sent out concerning the septic plans for the near future, my husband and I think that this is crazy and are completely against this. Are you concerned that this might just make bigger septic problems and issues for my husband and I as well as for our neighbors because of this? After you cut all of the trees down, the ones that are right now absorbing a lot of the water, preventing such problems with the septic systems. I truly hope that you have the intelligence to rethink the situation and potential problems, otherwise we will all know why uh his for sale sign says waterfront property. I truly wish that we could be there, whoever, we're both handicapped and have a very hard time getting around, especially with this bad weather. Thank you for reading this letter, Harold and Sheila Dutton and.
Howard, would you, yeah, would you zoom that, okay?
There, this is twenty-nine.
Okay, that's that's the lot, okay, and they're shown on the assessors list, but.
Right, and.
Somehow you weren't, and.
I can address them.
Yeah, would you state your name for the record, sir, you all signed in and stuff, right? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Bart Griffiths, I live at twenty-nine Pond Street, I'm not the landowner.
I understand.
But where you put your septic tanks, number one? You see that squiggly line up the top there?
Let let Howard pull it up for us so that we can all be on the same page.
Right there on the border of the land, right up in the corner. That was a stream at one time.
Where is that, where, can you can you show us where?
Go up with your hand all the way up to the top of the land.
Up here.
Right there.
Really?
Through there was a stream. It's actually Homer Top- Tappan's land.
Okay.
That floods out every year in April. Uh and that natural s- spring is still there, when they built Homer Homer's house, they had covered it up, okay? But that water is still there because we got a well and the well goes down to that corner. Uh Homer's yard, Homer passed away just a few months ago, uh and I don't know who was taking care of that property and I'm sure they don't know that all this is going on. But you got your sewage tanks and a drywell right there. Now, you, the people up there in the corner are being, gonna be affected by it. You got your tanks right next to my tanks at twenty-nine Pond Street. Now, the big issue here is if you go down there and look at the place, Homer's land goes down like this.
Well, could you, could you just help me, the the Tappan, you're referring to Tappan?
Tappan, yeah.
Now follow Tappan.
His land goes down like this and it all goes into like four corners, okay?
That's where the power lines are.
Where do you think all that water's gonna go? Right, and flood his whole whole property. Now, I had him, Howard, look up on the maps, they don't even show that stream being there.
It, right, it, we looked it up.
Forty years ago, they it was there.
Yeah, it's not even uh shown with anything with FEMA.
I can't hear you.
With the FEMA flood maps that we looked at, it wasn't showing that area, it was showing farther towards pond or going over, but.
Is there someplace that you can look at that?
To see if there is a stream there?
If there was a stream there, there's a, there's, I'm telling you, there's a stream there, next month, you can come down and see it.
I don't doubt you for for a second, sir, but if if you say there was.
I'm not begrudging them ha- having three properties for whatever they want, but you you you're causing a natural disaster right there.
So that's naturally spring fed, you're saying?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it's not coming from, say, North Street for instance, an overflow or it's, it wouldn't be coming from an overflow from North Street?
No, it would be all in that area, those trees for years, there's a couple thousand trees in that area, that's been absorbing all that water from that area. You go down there tonight with the trees there, you'll sink in the mud at least six inches, okay, that's how bad it is. I got a six sixty foot driveway where I live, the driveway is all sponge. Now, the point is, the person down here on this site down the bottom, and I think she's here tonight.
You're talking about Dunn then?
Her land is like.
D Giovanni?
Four feet down from the land that they're talking of building this property on. Where's that water gonna run off? Right in her backyard. And like I said, we only knew or found out about this two days ago, so.
Certainly something to keep uh in mind, sir.
So they're very upset over it, they're, the reason why they're not here, they're both handicapped and they're up in their seventies and eighties.
Understood.
So I came down with the letter, so you know, you'd understand that there is a stream there, it's been there for years. And I really think somebody should look at the physical properties down there because the the houses up in the corner didn't realize that they were putting a septic tanks right next to that corner.
This is noted as reserve and this is the primary.
Do you think?
Can I, can I, may I, just for my own satisfaction for what you said, um the test pit information, where's the test pits, show me the test pits.
Test pits are right where those, the rectangles at, those little circles with the.
Okay.
Circle.
It's four.
Two, one, two, 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 three.
There's two in each area and there's perk test in each area, um again, we had good depths.
We have the soil logs for those?
I can get the soil logs.
Please send those soil logs, I wanna see the.
And I'll definitely take a look at what he's speaking of and I'll try to address it at the next meeting, I can't really address it this meeting because it's the first time I've heard of it, so.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Oh, I got the same.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Julie, I'm sorry to shut you off.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could get a map and just show uh the butters uh on the map to, for us, where exactly the butters septic is. You know, the board of health.
If they have records, yeah, we can do that.
A record like that and and you could work with Larry to see his input on that.
It might be interesting.
We do design the drainage to have no impact on the abutting properties by.
Right.
Maintaining it on our own property.
Might be interesting.
Obviously, wat- water runs off the property, it runs off today and it will continue to run off, and we can't stop that, so we don't wanna have the increase on the abutting property, and that's a different.
That's the goal. You got it.
Interesting to see the soil logs and see what the seasonal high groundwater is.
No problem.
Has the board of health reviewed those at all?
Uh they reviewed the one down here, they have not reviewed, they have not submitted that one.
They approved the one?
Yes. We meet all the setback requirements, obviously all the size requirements.
And separation. Are these raised systems? Are these raised systems?
Um they're some, they're a little bit raised, they're not highly raised, they're like at the ground, put a cover over top of them, so. I mean, the grades are eighty-seven, you can see the grade right now is eighty-six, so it's about a foot higher than than it was.
So you had to raise it to get it just away from the ground, the existing groundwater?
We have to have five foot separation because we have such good pervert rate.
So you 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 uh before you were saying that the water is flowing this way, which which makes sense now to me that it's flowing that way because.
It actually flows.
You're higher than everybody else around there.
Yeah, it flows two different directions, actually, it flows a little bit this way and something that way, so, which is why we're trying to maintain.
Sure.
Drainage on it.
Any more, just any more from the board members? Um have you signed in?
Yes, I did.
And would you state your name for the record, please?
Andrea Di Giovanni, twenty-seven Pond Street.
Andrea, you need to come up so we can pick you up on the microphone, please.
Would you please? Thank you.
So I'd like to thank Mr. Griffiths who beautifully described exactly my concerns. And then I wanna confirm that indeed our our land, the Di Giovanni land, twenty-seven Pond Street, is about four feet below the level of the lot thirty-three and thirty-three A. Also, my land slopes downward, so it, you know, it it just, in the back of the property, it just even gets worse. You know, um and it's very interesting uh to know now what what goes on on the other side because I actually wasn't aware of you know, the the s- the waterway, the stream and um the slope of the land. So I think what would be very interesting for uh the board to know and the the uh um you know, the environmental side of things, exactly what the elevations are, you know, and and where is the water really gonna go? Because the trees are being cut down and you know, the water is gonna go somewhere, so we we wanna know where the water's gonna end up.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to know if there was, if there were any thoughts about my um idea that I proposed at the last meeting. You know, there are ways that um folks deal with these situations such as porous surface. I mean, if Jefferson Court wasn't a paved surface like its plan to be, but it was actual porous material, you know, some of this water could be dealt with very easily, just by, you know, seeping into the ground. So that was one idea that I proposed last meeting and I just was wondering if any research was done in in that matter. Um and if you need an example of this work, just look at the school that's being built right now in Georgetown, they they have a long driveway that's all porous surface, learn from them and um you can do the same thing here.
Well, we did address, we did address the um the water running off the the roadway. If you see the, I don't know if you can blow up the the roadway itself a little bit, if you see all along, all on the road that the dark triang- rectangular trench is basically stone to the surface, so the water will run off, go into the swale, into this trench and into the ground. So we're gonna recharge a lot of the groundwater, it falls onto the onto the property, right back into the ground, so it's not gonna run off, it's gonna stay on the site.
But you're showing a twelve foot wide pavement there and you're gonna lose that because you're gonna go to sixteen.
Sixteen in the front, yeah.
In the front.
So we're gonna just, we'll have to increase the size of the trench some to make it work. So I, you know, we can definitely.
How would this all function, maybe this is a question for you, maybe this is a question for Larry as well, how would this entire development function if that roadway were to be porous pavement and it was to be maintained in perpetuity as porous? Problem with porous pavement. In the homeowner's agreement. As part of the homeowner's agreement.
I can tell you the primary problem with, problem with porous pavement is it has to be maintained, has to be vacuumed.
Were you listening?
I can get it vacuumed. I mean, I don't even, I don't even know if there's a, if there's a company out there that will do the maintenance on a porous pavement. So I I think it, in the long run, the trenches that were proposed are much easier to maintain, uh long run, and they're easier to maintain in the future. Cost, more cost effective than porous pavement, if it clogs, I don't even know if there's a solution to it other than ripping it up and putting it back in.
Keep it un-clogged.
I think just quickly from a maintenance, from a legal point of view, I I just see a couple of issues that, one, uh it may be a deterrent for someone buying the house if they're. I mean, my understanding is the porous pavement is pretty controversial as far as the maintenance, and secondly, it's an enforcement issue, how do you get the two? If they wanna put in a bituminous driveway. And secondly, it's an enforcement issue, how do you get the two, if they wanna put in a bituminous driveway, they're not, you know, yes, it may violate the agreement.
It is bituminous.
But, I mean, porous, if it had to be replaced ten years down the road, you know, I think it's an enforcement, it creates an unnecessary enforcement issue for the town, I think. It's different than just maintaining it, plowing it.
Well, it's private, I, I think if, if the neighbors start getting, uh, covered over with, uh...
Another layer of asphalt.
With another layer of impervious asphalt, then it would be a simple matter of litigation.
Well...
Not to give you billable hours or anything.
Litigation's never simple, unfortunately.
Uh, this is something for the board to think of, we're running a little bit behind schedule right now, we have four other hearings tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard with respect to Jefferson Court going once? Uh, would you state your name for the record, sir, and have you signed in, sir?
Yes, I am. Richard Pagnell, I'm with you.
Mr. Pagnell, I'm afraid you have to come up, or we won't be able to hear you. Sorry about that, sir.
I'm Richard Pagnell, um, I got an invitation to come to the meeting, and I'm, I'm not an immediate abutter, but I am, I am next to, uh, I'm two houses over from the De Giovanni's. But I'm also concerned about my septic system, because my septic system is right along the line, and I've been watching the construction.
What do you mean along the line? Would you clarify that?
It's on the edge, it's in the corner of my property.
Okay.
It's not too far from the corner of this property.
The property line, gotcha, okay, property line.
Yeah, I, I've seen the construction, a lot of trees have come down.
Okay.
Correct? A lot of trees have been taken down out of that lot.
Happened when I built houses.
Lots of trees, all right, so, but we've had no, no problem with drainage yet, but, you know, I'm concerned with my septic system. Uh, you know, I'm getting to the point, maybe next few years, I'm gonna be selling my house, and they've had to go through redoing another type of system. So, that, that's, that's one of my concerns, because the visibility, uh, is gonna be affected. It's, it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, quiet, good, good, good to the eyes, that's gonna change, but that's, that's, that's another issue, but that, that's gonna be impacted too. But mainly is the, is the water. I, I didn't, I didn't understand about the approval of that first septic system, has it been approved by the Board of Health?
It has.
Is it a raised system?
We've heard, we've heard testimony that it is slightly raised system, and it has been approved by the Board of Health.
Over what's the, we have the five-foot separation for groundwater for the, it's actually a two-minute pervert rate throughout the whole site, and it's all sand.
There's very good soil all through there.
What was the date on the approval from the Board of Health?
And I'm concerned with all the, uh, impervious roofs and the driveway and all, that, that water has to go someplace.
Suffice to say, I, I think I speak for everyone when I say that we have, uh, we have water concerns that really need to be addressed by the engineer and possibly by Larry, uh, in, in response to that, and, uh...
We can kind of sit down with Larry and go over all, all his concerns and...
It'll be a big topic from when you come back.
Is everyone comfortable with, uh, the idea of having Howard ask him to, uh, investigate the idea of porous pavement? And how that would affect the, uh, the appreciative, healthful water situation in that area?
Yeah.
And maybe that might alleviate some of the, um, some of the concerns of the neighbors and...
I think too, shall, I think too, uh, the date on the Board of Health approval, I think that's important to see how old this permit is and if it's still valid for...
Oh, we just had it, we just did it back in October, November.
You just did it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we worked it back in August, July.
I thought, I, I did, I misunderstood, I thought you said something about
Six months.
You wanted a protection on that house?
Yeah, wait, so this all happened this summer?
This summer?
Took down the house, this fall.
Okay, if, um, if there are no further comments from the, uh, oh, uh, okay, sir.
I'm stuck here in the midst sixteen Pond Street, that doesn't affect me, actually, because I'm across the street on the other side of the lane, we're ditching your rest of the year.
Come a little closer to the microphones, if you would, please, sir.
I'm just suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that, uh, the person you're talking about, Larry, makes a physical visit to that side of Pond Street and makes an eyesight, looks it over.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir, thank you. If there are no more comments from the audience, I will accept the motion to, uh, continue this hearing. To, and we're looking at, Howard, what, yeah, what are we looking at there?
April ninth.
April ninth is our ideal date, four, nine, fourteen.
So moved.
So moved by Tim.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Hearing is hereby continued to April ninth.
Third, fourth, seventh, eighth.
Twenty-fourteenth at seven PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Harold. Thank you.
Anybody who, uh, I need to, here's where the boys room, so if you wanna have a five-minute break, see you later. Or... Hi, everybody, and welcome back to the Planning Board meeting of March twelfth, two thousand fourteen. Tonight, uh, at this time, we are, uh, open, uh, excuse me, we are, yeah, we're, we're reopening the continuation of the definitive subdivision for Turning Leaf. This has been continued from January twenty-second. And for the applicant is...
Jill.
Jill Mann, and if you would...
He was gonna say Lisa.
I could see it, I could see it.
Um, good evening, Jill Mann, here on behalf of the applicant. Um, I did print out the form, eh, Howard, and we'll give it to you when I find it. Um, anyway, we were here this evening to go over the plans and the response that we submitted to Larry Graham a couple of weeks ago. Um, and also to present to you our traffic report. In addition to that, um, we did present a, a letter with regard to just some concerns that the Conservation Commission had raised, which actually were the same as some that were raised by these board members. One being the, um, right of way and whether or not it should or shouldn't be on that parcel of land that is going to be granted or gifted if this board would choose to accept it, um, as open space in the back part called Parcel F. And it's those rights of way that exist to the abutting properties. Um, they raised concerns and, um, as well as did this board, and we're just looking for a direction as to what the board would like us to do with regard to that easement that exists presently. Not the right of way that gives you access, but the easement that exists on your property, or proposed property in that. In addition to that, we are just looking, when we had originally appeared before the board, we had discussed, um, lengths of dead end and potentially just extending and not cutting all the way out to Searle, and the Conservation Commission had, for some reason, um, made a representation that it had talked to Howard and said that we would be willing to grant, um, that the board would be willing to entertain, um, an extension of the length of road, and I said that we had extensive conversations, not only with Howard, but with this board about that, and we've never been given any, any indication either way. The board never has said, yes, we'll give anything, and, um, they...
You're, you're referring to a meeting that you, a hearing that you held with the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, yeah, um...
When, when was that?
What date was that?
The last Tuesday, was that?
Yeah.
Tuesday?
Whatever.
Last Thursday.
Thursday.
They're not on TV, are they? They're not recorded, huh?
No, they're not.
Okay.
You know what, I only think too that there was one of the, um, he, he, they, they audio, they audio it.
Oh.
And Steve Bajemski had just said that, you know, that there was, that we could do a cul-de-sac. So, we said, you know what, we'll come to this board and let them know that that was even discussed and ask them to respond to the Conservation Commission, saying that, you know, there's a length of dead end applicable because Lisa Lane already extends, um, so we just wanted to address that as well. Um, but I think that if the board is interested in...
I don't know how to respond to that.
Have we received anything from the Concom, um, formally?
Oh, they're not going to, they asked, they asked me to ask you. I, I...
I believe you.
Yeah. I mean, I can...
Steve sent me an email.
Okay.
Just outlining what, what Jill is going to explain or is explaining right now. But it, it's a little bit different, but...
Okay, um...
I don't see the email, so I don't know.
The email's not, not in there.
Oh, okay, I thought you told me it was, all right. Okay.
Do you have a copy of it, or?
Not here, no.
Okay, well, we could always discuss it maybe at the next meeting.
They're just looking for you to give some sort of an indication to them at their next meeting, which is April seventeenth. Um, and basically, their position was, you know, if, if we're going to opine on this, we need to know that the, um, Planning Board has looked at extending and granting a waiver for their dead end restriction. That's what they want. Or, or will not grant a, a waiver to the dead end restriction. Essentially, they said, look, when we look at this plan, if you are going to be anywhere near the wetlands, we, and we have to give you some sort of relief under the Wetland Act, we wanna know that the, um, Planning Board has got to give some sort of relief and waiver as well. So, we wanna know if you presented and requested, I'm not kidding, you requested and presented, um, a plan for a waive, a waiver, a waiver plan, basically, which would requi- require the board to waive its length of dead end restriction to permit this particular development to proceed without connecting to Searle Street.
And why would Concom like that?
Because then we don't have to go by where there's an area of wet...
All this conflict right here.
Yep.
And what, in some aspect of a design, would have a, a similar type of dead end shown here. And none of this would be constructed and, and they would be removing the, the conflict with the wetlands through here.
So, would they be losing lots to do that?
Right.
Yeah, that's the one with three lots, I, I remember, right?
Three?
If, if that was...
It's like twenty, I think it's twenty, how many lots was it?
Yeah, I think you're thinking of a different project.
Yeah, that's another project, not a...
It looks like, it looks like twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
There was a cutoff of, you'd lose three houses.
Oh, lose three, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I'm not as concerned about...
I thought you said there would be three.
Losing lots as I am about the fact that, uh, if, if you don't have this, uh, connection back out to, to Searle Street that you have all, you know, the, the, the dead end of that dead end roadway, I mean, isn't it?
One.
Aren't we at eleven hundred feet to start with or something?
Sixteen.
Sixteen hundred feet already?
Yeah, it should be eight hundred.
So, plus...
But we understand, and we, we, we did discuss it with this board informally, I mean, we didn't, and the board said to us, no, we're not in favor. And we, basically, in the letter, we said, we recounted that to the board, and we recounted that to the Conservation Commission, and they said, basically, okay, we know you're telling us that, we want, we want Howard to tell us that the board said that, not you.
Oh, they want a formal.
Well, not, not a vote, because you can't really vote, but basically, what's your position with regard to extending an already overlong dead end way?
I haven't changed my mind.
I haven't changed my mind, um...
It's not, it's...
And I know we haven't formally voted on it.
Yeah.
Can I get a sense of the board for, uh, the, uh, for the benefit of the Conservation Commission? So that Howard can relate to, uh, Steve, the, the Concom agent, uh, a sense of the board, and we'll call it as that, only that, we're not held to it, and we're not in, in any way, shape, or form formally granting any waivers or denying any waivers. And I see a hand in the audience, and I'm wondering why.
Probably not the right time from your perspective, but since a lot of us were at the Concom meeting.
Okay.
The, the Concom, just to clarify...
Can you come up and state your name and address?
Jack Roseline, sixteen Lisa Lane, just to sort of clarify what the Planning Board, the reason that, not Planning Board, the Concom was asking for this is they kept coming back to saying, all right, well, you've got this plan that's gonna request a series of waivers. What we'd like to see, as the Concom is saying, is they wanna see a plan that doesn't have any waivers. And in their minds, that would include, uh, potentially, uh, putting something that didn't connect to Searle, but just came off Lisa Lane.
That's a whole nother aspect.
Oh, well, no, no waivers plan on Concom is a no waivers plan under the, under the Wetlands Protection Act, uh, chapter one forty, that has nothing to do with what...
No, it doesn't, it's two different issues, he's just mixing two issues, that's all.
No, the reason I mention that is because there, the reason that Jill is asking to, to get your feeling as to whether you would consider extending off Lisa Lane is that was one of the potential, um, uh, ways that they'd be able to present a plan that would have fewer houses essentially. So, just wanna clarify that point, so...
And no matter what, I have to, I have to present to them a no waiver plan, no matter what?
Absolutely, but I, I think under...
You understand.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's under chapter one, yeah, one sixty-one, chapter one sixty-one, excuse me, chapter one sixty-one.
Yeah, it's definitely under your, um...
Not under us, it's not under subdivision, it's under Wetlands Protection.
I know you're trying to move it along, so why didn't you bring the plan with no waivers on it to them?
They're, they're...
Is that a simple question?
To have no waivers, you, you have to extend...
It has nothing to do with our waivers.
No, it has nothing to do with ours, but...
We are presenting it, we are, we, don't forget, we've only appeared before them once.
Yeah, this is a different year.
Because we've had some issues.
In order to, in order to
Twice.
To show a plan with no waivers, it would mean that we didn't have a connection out to Searle, which means that we would have a cul-de-sac off of, uh, an extension of, of Lisa Lane, which would be an extension of an already sixteen hundred-foot, um, dead end street. So, our point, and, and we relayed that to them, is that a no waiver plan is no lots.
It's impossible.
Because without, without getting a waiver from the length of dead end.
Bloodline.
It'd be bloodline.
There's not frontage for a lot.
There's a frontage for a lot.
You have to create the frontage, you'd have to extend the street.
He just says that easement to get to the property.
Never mind, I stand corrected. Uh, getting back to the sense of the board, so that we can dispense with this communication to the, uh, Concom and get on to Planning Board issues. Want me to go first? Um, I, I, I can, in good conscience, um, grant a waiver for over sixteen hundred-foot dead end in this town. I don't even wanna think about emergency vehicles and ambulances trekking their way in, and God forbid a tree ever falls. Uh, Julie, you wanna go?
Uh, I feel that way also, um, that's, that's asking quite a lot, I think, doubling it, you know, and that's my feeling on it.
Board members, you're not under any obligation to do this, if you wanna keep your ideas to yourself, you're certainly...
I can, no, I concur.
Okay. You concur?
Have we granted other waivers?
We haven't voted any waivers on them.
No, no, on other projects, like Stone Road.
What, the road, yep.
What was...
Stone Road was a shared driveway, it, it, it wasn't an extension of the road.
That was like sixteen hundred feet, that was already over...
Yeah, they couldn't extend it anymore.
So, if we didn't let them do it, well, I guess they had nowhere to go.
That's right.
Yeah, he could've gone in.
They were just going into the wetland anyway.
And you're talking one house, one or two, isn't it?
It's three houses.
Three?
Three lots.
Compared to twenty-four?
Was it Jefferson Court?
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't be keen on not, not having it reconnect.
Well, I hope that you got that, Howard, and you can express that to the Concom.
I, I gathered from its, uh, from, from the Planning Board meeting last night, that the Planning Board would not be in favor of, uh... that the Planning Board would not be in favor of creating or exaggerating the Lisa Lane length of road.
The road issue, yeah.
Redlining Lisa Lane instead of going to Searle Street.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for attending that. If I may, would it be okay if we presented our traffic plan?
I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
It's rather special and everything. And how long's it, you said that this was going to be three minutes at the last meeting.
We promise to keep it as fast as possible. This is Dan Mills, the board.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Mills from MDM Transportation Consultants.
Sort of tweak that just a little towards us.
Sure can.
And I'm sure the folks in the camera room can probably, can probably get it on the camera. And anybody that wants to watch it can probably see it on a screen. There you go. They've got a few of it. Great, thank you.
Not too good.
Mills Zoom.
Again, Dan Mills from MDM, Principal Traffic Engineer with MDM Transportation Consultants. We conducted a traffic study for the proposed residential development. The study includes a review of several intersections in and around the southern of the proposed subdivision, including the second sub of Searle Street, in this direction here. We also have Fieldstone Lane, Marlboro Road, Tenny Street.
Let's just second page in.
Yeah.
Sure, so the intersection information that we gathered was traffic volume data, site distance information, intersection crash history. We also conducted an intersection capacity analysis. We have a review of all of these important pieces of information compiled into our traffic study, which we've submitted to you folks. Hope you get a chance to read it. Really, the, one of the more important parts of the traffic study has to do with trip generation and one of traffic that is developed, generated by the particular development. It consists of approximately twenty-four single family homes, which is very consistent with what is actually along Bussing Lane and Lisa Lane today. It leaves about twenty-three homes in that area. So we can have a very compatible sized neighborhood, if you will. When we look at Searle Street, the entrance to it, Searle Street is a one-way roadway. Entering from Tenny Street travels one way, all the way almost to Woodland Lane, where there's an industrial area there. So while the road is narrow and has a curved nature to it, because of its one-way traffic flow, really eliminates about fifty percent of the conflicts you would typically have from a two-way street. The proposed access is on, will be on Searle Street. And again, there is a extension of Lisa Lane into the subdivision. With regard to this trip generation that we, we estimated, again, we have a very similar use next door. We did some traffic counts. So we're actually able to utilize some of that information to project how much this particular development will generate. Because it's of the same size, same use characteristics, we expect to generate the same amount of traffic. We did verify that from what we refer to as ITE trip generation methodology. This is a document that has a whole host of data points for residential developments. And looking at that empirical data, we look at the, basically, weekday morning peak hour, when you're a rush hour condition, and weekday evening peak hour, when you have the rush hour condition. That's when generally people come, come to and from the houses the most during a one-hour time period. We see that, that empirical information is giving about twenty-seven vehicle trips out of that development during the morning peak hour, and about twenty-nine vehicle trips during the evening peak hour. When we look at the information that we obtained from Lisa Lane and Bussing Way intersection, neighborhood, that actually generated about twenty-two vehicles during the peak hour and thirty-one vehicles during the evening peak hour. So they're very consistent, twenty-seven to twenty-two and twenty-one to thirty-one.
Can I, I just want to make sure the audience understands, and make, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're doing is making a comparison between what theoretically would occur-
Which is the ITE, right?
Which is the ITE in what you observed. So you haven't even gotten into the impact of the development.
Correct, correct. We're looking at clearly what the, what the traffic volume will be generated during its peak, peak time periods, which is usually one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon, when people are coming to and from work or their errands and whatnot. So again, we can see a similarity between the two neighborhoods, with the subdivision existing. So the other part of our exercise is that we need to see where these vehicles are going to be coming to and from. How are they going to get to the subdivision? What roads are they going to use to enter the subdivision? And what roads are they going to use to exit the subdivision? We looked at the existing travel patterns, specifically leaving Lisa Lane. Today, people leave Lisa Lane, they go to work. Where are most people working? They usually head down to one thirty-three. That's what our analysis said. The way that they generally get there, they generally get there through White Pine, go to Marlboro. This subdivision will have another access point further down-
Then Marlboro takes them to Tenny?
Tenny, correct.
Okay. Got you.
This particular subdivision will have another-
Do they, do they turn, do they primarily go take a left there and head towards the access road behind the Reno Apartments? Or do they-
Nope, they generally turn right.
They turn right?
Majority people turn right and head towards one thirty-three.
Head to one thirty-three, take the Tenny Street, U-turn there, and head out one thirty-three.
Anyway, head out one thirty-three, yeah.
Got you.
Yep. So this particular development will have a second access point further down Searle Street. Again, Searle Street is a one-way roadway, so people have to take a left when you're out of the post-site driveway. And they would generally, instead of going, continuing down to the industrial area and turn right on Woodland Road, they would, more than that, they turn down Fieldstone Lane. Again, people living in that, people, the, you can see on the screen, the cluster of lots that would really be along the extension of Lisa Lane versus people up in the Vineyard Lane, Grapevine Circle area. Those folks would actually probably use Lisa Lane to, to exit, just similar to existing people that are on Lisa Lane today. Again, so we, we put up this diagram that shows that about seventy percent of the folks are going to be using Lisa Lane, existing Lisa Lane, about thirty percent of the folks will be using the new site driveway to exit this, come to and from the site. As we translate these volumes out to-
Can I interrupt you there, if I may, please? Does, now, does that play into something that, and I, I can't quote chapter in verse. Larry Graham, the technical review engineer, had mentioned something about the feasibility, the possibility of making, making this one way, which would, I guess, prevent, I don't know, how would that affect it? Maybe I, maybe I should just put that to you. How would that affect it?
We haven't looked at that particular configuration, if you will. It would force more people to go out Fieldstone Lane, is really what that would boil down to. That would be people that would be leaving. People coming to the site would still have the opportunity to come up Lisa Lane, existing Lisa Lane with a new site driveway. Leaving, that would put more people down the Fieldstone Lane. They'll still come out Marlboro.
So one way or the other Marlboro's getting it.
Marlboro Road.
Marlboro's going to get it one way or the other.
We do expect some people would go out to Woodland, Woodland Road.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the people that would be turning left on Tenny Street.
Right.
Maybe go out that way to turn left.
Parallel along the highway, run up that way, and then hang the left on Tenny.
Yeah.
Okay. To get behind the Reno Apartments. Got you. I understand. Thank you.
Sure. From an intersection capacity analysis, the traffic volumes themselves are very light in this general area. There's really no substantial queuing or delays at any of the intersections. The streets are all free-flow roadways, with and without the development. We did conduct intersection capacity analysis, a scenario without the development, level service a year better, running again with the developer traffic on the model. Again, level service a year better. It's a grading system from the, from FTE, for us as a, as a-
It's delay time or something? How long you actually sitting there waiting to get to the intersection and being able to take it?
Yes. And generally, these are all very comfortable levels that people are waiting. There's no backups, if you will.
So how long would it take from this development to get to one thirty-three, like you asked before?
We didn't do a specific travel time model, but the shortest route, time-wise as well, because it's free-flow, there's no internal intersections where you go waiting, there's no traffic lights in this, in this neighborhood, so it's free-flow. So the general direction would be to White Pine and then turn right onto, to Marlboro Road and right on to Tenny. That would be the, the most direct, would be heading towards the east, otherwise.
I saw a hand, and I, I, do you want to present, or, okay, go ahead. Well, your three-minute presentation's already taken fifteen minutes, so. I don't know what that means, but two more minutes.
One of the other important aspects that we did look at, this is a new, a new roadway coming into Searle Street. We want to make sure that it's visible both to and from people on Searle Street. So we, we conducted a, an evaluation of the intersection, proposed intersection in relation to site distance up and down Searle Street.
Could you give me the page on that? Is that?
This is actually just a site, oh, yes, I can.
There you go. Is it twelve, or?
Site distance is a big page, but eleven, yeah. Because of the travel speed, the, the site distance is related to the travel speed. The faster someone goes along here, the more time that they need to react to someone coming, either stopping for someone exiting from a proposed driveway, or someone who's pulling out onto Searle Street. The vehicle traveling along Searle, Searle Street needs to react to that, the confluence. This is, this is a straight section, relatively a low-street section of Searle Street. We have great site distance, visibility up and down Searle Street. Again, it's a one-way roadway, so we really need to pay attention to folks coming from the right as you're exiting the site driveway. One thing we did note is that there are some, obviously, some of the existing trees on the property today with the site drive going, so those will need to be removed. It's efficiency to provide adequate site distance. There's also a stone wall that should be lowered to some degree.
Is that note number four, a removal or a lowering of the existing rock wall?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this property is under the control of the applicant.
Okay.
So that, that's not going to be an issue, those two things, but-
That's going to be shown on the plate?
It will.
Right, so the, so-
We will.
Again, the visibility coming to and from the post-site driveway is, is helpful.
Sounds like you mitigated a problem there.
It's part of the-
Can I, can I, can I add to that? And maybe, maybe it's just the way, my mind doesn't work the right way sometimes. When we talk about site distance, what we're referring to, people traveling down the roadway, someone's traveling down Searle Street, and someone's not paying attention, they pull out of the new roadway just to access Searle Street. What is, when we talk about site distance, what is the site distance? Is it only computed from the, the point of view where someone would be exiting, the car exiting Searle, onto Searle Street from the new Lisa Lane?
There's two aspects to site distance. One is someone driving, traveling down Searle Street. They're, they're already traveling.
Right.
They're going twenty-five miles an hour. They, they see an obstruction on the road, they need to stop.
Right.
They need to be able to stop.
Okay.
Similarly, someone who's exiting from Lisa Lane, they need to be, see a car so many feet away that they could, they have an opportunity to exit onto Searle Street.
That's why you want the rock wall removed, right? So that they could have the safety of being able to see. They're not obstruct, they don't have to pull halfway in the street so they can see that car coming. I'm a little more concerned about folks that are driving down that roadway and that are, they're on Searle Street, excuse me, that are on Searle Street, and someone puts the brakes on in front of them because they're turning into that roadway. They're turning into that Lisa Lane entrance. And how do you compute that? How do you figure that?
Again, we look at, back up past Wilkins Place, you're traveling down Searle Street, heading to the east. You are able to measure the distance to the intersection, to the proposed site driveway.
Okay.
And that distance needs to, to within a range.
Is that in here?
Yes, page eleven.
Page eleven? Could you point that out for me, please? Because I'm always concerned about cars stopping at the last minute, they don't put the blinker on, it's late at night, going home. I turn, I take this left every time, every night. You know, I don't bother putting my blinker on. I just put the brakes on, stop because someone's coming out, and next thing you know, somebody gets tail ended.
So on table four on page eleven, these bound directions, which folks will be traveling down Searle Street, the criteria is such that you need about a hundred and fifty-five feet, you need to see a hundred and fifty-five feet from the proposed site driveway. And someone who's traveling along Searle Street can see about over three hundred and fifty feet. So you can see well over that distance, the, the criteria.
Okay. But it says the, the posted speed limit is not applicable.
It's not available.
It's not available.
There's no posted speed limits along Searle Street, so.
So all of this data is presumed upon people traveling at twenty-five miles an hour.
Well, the reason why we didn't select twenty-five miles an hour, we actually sampled-
That was, yes, I understand, you got it as a, the eighty percent percentile, got you.
Right.
That, that was what you determined to be the at, or the mean speed.
Exactly, the, the speed that we, we need to base our analysis.
I understand, I understand. My, my concern is that no one knows how fast the speed limit is on that street. And that no one seems to be able to tell me if this board can suggest that to the police and will they adhere to it. I have a little issue with that, and no one seems to be able to give me an answer.
This is intensely populated, I believe, so I believe that the state mandated speed limit is either twenty-five or thirty-five, like you already remember.
Okay.
I think it's thirty.
It's thirty.
Thirty, right in the-
It's thirty. Thickly settled area.
Thickly settled thirty?
Yeah. The only way you can get twenty-five is downtown areas.
So we probably would not recommend that you put a thirty mile an hour speed limit. Probably don't encourage people to drive past them if they're already traveling.
But for the most part, from, from your studies, saw people mostly travel at twenty-five.
But you can't enforce it if it's twenty-five, so what good is it going to do?
Well, we're not traditionally opposed to twenty-five. We have people traveling twenty-five, which is a comfortable speed to them, a comfortable speed.
Oh, yeah, it is.
From an accident perspective, we didn't, over the past five years, we haven't seen any accidents on Searle Street. So it's serving its purpose.
How far back did you check for accidents?
We went five years, so we're back to two thousand and, uh- So we looked at the, the data was provided by the, which is not recent. Two other things that we did note, just in our review, these are just part of the course of our traffic study. They are really independent of the project. We go back to- Okay, I do want to look at one thing I have to say. I mean, I know I've gone way over my three or four minutes, but I think it's important to note that there is a sidewalk along one side of Lisa Lane. We will be, at some point reviewing it with school department, the bus company, whatnot, locating a bus stop at the, the proposed site driveway. Based on the information that we have, there is a bus stop currently at the end of Lisa Lane, and there's a bus stop at the end of Fieldstone. So this would be actually en route along the same path. There's no, there's no going through the neighborhood. So we'll be at the same, and this would be-
Why would there be no going through the neighborhood? You're adding twenty-six houses, times two, you're, that's a whole nother bus.
Again-
That's a whole nother bus, dude.
It would be, it would really be up to the, from what I understand, up to the school department and the bus company to work out where their services, again, there will be a sidewalk within the development. And again, there, there's, if you will, there's twenty-three homes up Lisa Lane today in the bus stop that can walk there and turn around and pull aside. It continues along.
Well, that's because it's a cul-de-sac.
So they may opt, they actually may opt to go through the neighborhood and then take a left out of the post-site driveway. That might be something that they would, again, it's really up to the bus company. They have timers, they have, you know, definitely some timing standards on assuming to difference get to school on time. Don't want to be going too far out of the way, but.
Perhaps what we could do is reach out to Carol Jacobs with a letter and ask her to chime in on that and find out if she would prefer to see the two subdivision for the extension of Lisa Lane have a bus stop on Searle Street at its exit or within the subdivision itself. I don't profess to know.
Just to get back to the two points I was alluding to before, again, just on the course of our study, there are just things that we picked up along the way here. The Marlboro Road, Tenny Street intersection, site distance is very restricted via some embankment on the northeast quarter of the intersection. Been looking at the accident history, those two accidents over the past five years. It's not a, well, any accidents, we don't want to see any accidents, but compared to other intersections in the state, the very low number of accidents that have occurred in the intersection. I will note that there is a dangerous intersection sign posted, or, or an approach to that intersection. I'm not sure when that was put up, specific reasons for that, if there was any previous history of that. It seems like, like at some point, the town, you know, believes it to be a, a dangerous intersection. I don't know if there's any, any improvement projects that are already planned for this, having that information or not.
Yeah.
Um.
Before we had National Way, trucks used to go up there. And that was why, it was dangerous, because there was eighteen-wheelers going up there to Martell Way and then National Way, Tenny Street, that was, that was the route.
It's not a site distance issue there? We're, we're talking about the corner of Tenny Street and Marlboro?
I think it's just the.
Malboro Te- uh Tenny Drive.
Um and, and, and did, could, I don't wanna throw your presentation off, but.
The trucks used to go up to uh before we had the uh er, the um, well.
The bypass, the bypass, uh behind the Reno Apartments there, right, the access road.
Yeah. That's right. That's right.
Yeah.
The only way that they couldn't get up there, the trucks couldn't get up there, was from Tenny Street and going up there through Marlboro and Entranceway.
That's interesting, and, and I'm sure that was
That was.
part of the, the reason. I, I seem to remember um someone mentioning something, one of the abutters about um that having a unique and difficult site distance. And do you have the site distances for that area, did, did you by any chance happen to do that?
Uh we didn't get the level detail on this, again, this is sort of, this, that location is sort of independent from the, from the uh project itself.
I remember an abutter mentioning that that was a.
You don't, there's no control, we'd be, the property is up, you know, up at this portion, you have no control over any of the, the property, you know.
Right, you don't have direct control over.
Right.
Right. Um I'm just wondering if um, if you could uh advise in any way of any uh possible.
Um.
As, as a help to the town.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's private, I'm guessing it's private property there, um where the embankment is, seems to go back bit ways into the, into the property.
Mm-hmm. Mm.
Um the only suggestion, it's probably not a popular one, is to make Malboro Road an entrance only. Um you know, if, if the town, again, perceives it as a, you know, a safety issue, again, the, the accident history's not, not supporting that dangerous intersection notion, um.
Accident has been going back five years.
Going back five years.
That's not very long.
The trucks, the trucks are back, the trucks are an issue from ten.
The trucks. At least, uh longer than that, I think in the ninety, ninety-five maybe, there's one that.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly can be approved, I mean, it's cer- it's certainly, you know, it's not, it's not a, 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 a situation with that embankment. Uh people seem to be managing, again, past five years, two accidents, people seem to be managing, if in one way or another, uh getting enough. The, the thing to note is that thirty people do turn right out of that ra- out of that, so that's the, that's the easiest movement out of an intersection is a right turn.
What we don't. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh which probably helps out, out the su- situation there.
What's your projected uh traffic increase at that intersection, both developments?
I believe it's about thirty uh seven vehicles turning right, and they're adding about nineteen for the right turn.
So can you repeat that, just, so the site distance is bad on one side, but not the other side, and that's why everyone goes right?
No, everyone's going right because that's their destination, they're, they're going right because they're heading in that direction.
So there's.
But as, as far as I know, uh I don't um. Based on our traffic line counts and my observations, and where I think people come and going, uh people from their work, workplace appointments, or shopping centers or whatnot, destination areas, people are turning right because that's where they're headed, not because there's a site distance issue at the location.
So they're coming.
Five turn left and a hundred and twenty turn right, the morning peak. I'm reading.
Well, the morning is the school kids, I would say, yeah.
Uh but, uh just to get back to when you were asking, it was a hope solution, um it might be to make uh Malboro Road an entrance only. Um again, if, if there is a uh perception from the town that there's a, you know, true safety issue out there, this, that might resolve that, it'll provide, would obviously be inconvenient to the residents. Um but if that's um, if you're looking for, you know, ideas, that would be, well, uh.
That's why I was thinking that maybe this, the one side was difficult to see, and the sight wasn't as good, that's why everybody's turning right.
Well, totally right. And then just up, just the, the last thing we did notice in the area is at uh Fieldstone Lane in uh Malboro uh Road, there is no traffic control from what we saw of things, no stop signs. Um intersections.
That's T-type, right?
It's a T, kind of a Y-ish type intersection.
Mm.
Um it's, you know, the, the, who has the right of way is not clear. Um it's, I guess who's, ever's there first, uh would probably be.
Right.
Everybody, people are pulling up, they're slowing down as they're approaching the intersection, and they're going through it because they're trying to get into the intersection a little bit more, so um again, just a, just a note as part of our, the course of our work. And I think uh, I think they're, use up my four minutes, so they're.
Any questions from the board regarding the traffic study?
Um I just wanna, just quickly, in, in a minute, maybe if you, if you can, um w- from my experience, one of the things that happens is that if, if a development puts something that's a level of service A and it impacts a level of service C, they might uh in the traffic study, talk about things to, to mitigate that change of level of service and, and things like that.
Such as an off-site mitigation?
Well, no, if, if they're, if, if they're uh.
Intersection.
Intersection, they, they would make no control of her as a. So what I was saying was, in, in your report, was there any level of service change for any of the intersections that you observed and did studies on?
No, and again, I, I indicate that they're all operating E or better, they're all actually operating at level service A, so.
Existing and then.
Existing and.
Post-development?
Post-development, they're operating in that condition as well.
At the same.
Right, right, it's only hit, you know, handful of seconds of anything added to the delay, it was not perceptible to them, the average hours. Uh there's no, again, this, this is very low-volume roadways in this area, there's no um queuing, there's no backup, that'll stop signs. That's one of the things I think works with this, you know, while it's not an ideal situation, you're not having someone three times behind you saying, go, 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 when you're waiting in an intersection. It's, you can kinda take your time, you can kinda creep out a little bit, I, I, you know, I think that's why that, that is working. Uh you don't have a bunch of people behind you walking along telling you to move, because if you don't have that delay, you don't have that. Uh you know, the traffic flow along Teeny Street, that's uh, you're able to get onto the traffic stream without a bunch of them.
That's existing, but now you're adding more cars, so it's gotta be a little different.
Again, I, we, again, we're, we're not adding a significant number of cars that would trigger uh any, any queuing really along Malboro Road, so.
What would you consider a volume increase that would trigger um that kind of concern? I mean, it's about a sixty, from what you were just saying, it's at a sixty percent increase.
It would need to be tremendous amount of volume on Teeny Street. For Mal, the few.
I double it, triple it, fifty times more, or I mean.
Do you have, do you have any said that, that level of now, so again, we're working at level service A condition, if we were at level service D or E or N, and it started bordering, you know, whether you're looking at, like you're running into some trouble, we would explore, the, 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 what would trip it? And the next one, we're, we're very far away from that, so we didn't, you know, we didn't go down that path anymore, because it's, it's just not needed for us to do that. We're not, we're not close to that point where we're triggering some type of improvement, like a traffic signal, if you will.
I, well, I'm wondering, what would?
What would trigger a traffic signal?
Yes.
Again, you need to have a lot of traffic on Teeny Street. You need to have uh.
I mean, would you say doubled or tripled or?
Uh.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a sense of.
We haven't done that level of now, so.
Because, you know, we're doubling the, the number of, of homes that are serviced by, by Lisa Lane.
So on Teeny Street, for example, in the evening, we had two hundred cars in each, uh total, in each direction. We generally look at five hundred, some of the uh criteria needs to be eight hundred cars, so we, we're talking about a factor of four in some conditions, and we need to sus- you need to sustain that uh over a fairly long period of time, not just a one hour in the morning, you need to sustain it over four hours, some criteria is over eight hours. The state wants you to have a consistent, high level of volume over an eight-hour period, you know, to justify a traffic signal. Uh we're very far away from that.
Um if there are no more questions from the board regarding uh traffic study, I'd like to point out that one of the things that Larry Graham uh did in his review of February seventh, uh Larry asked uh, points out that the, the plans don't show um calculated site distances. Larry um moves it, the, the traffic study shows those distances, and that data needs to get to Larry. I don't know how we transfer it, if you send it to him, or if it's drawn on the plans.
He sent it.
What way does that, how does that information go?
He's got a copy of the traffic study?
He does, okay.
Uh but I can add those distances to the plan as well.
I think that's what he's looking for, I, I'm, I'm not sure, it's, it's D under his comments for, for this?
Yeah. I can add it to the plans, but he's, he does have that, uh he has the copy of the study.
Okay.
Uh but I will add it to the.
Maybe it'll help if you, if you can extract that information out and make a little bit uh.
Yeah.
Transparent.
Thank you, thank you for the word, good work. Um I would very much like to um go over um this very extensive set of reviews that Larry's done. It is nine o'clock, um I know that we've got um a traffic study done and a wonderful presentation, sir, thank you. Um I'd like to focus tonight on the traffic issue, because it is a big issue, and I'm sure that the abutters are here, they see a lot of hands. With uh, with permission of the board, I'd like to focus on that tonight, do a continuation, I know you're not eager for any kind of continuation, but we do have three other hearings tonight. And we're really running low tonight, so I'm gonna take um the first hand I see. Sir, please come up, state your name, I hope you signed in.
I do, Andy McLaughlin, Lisa Lane, seventeen Lisa. So I just had a couple of questions, um one has to do with the sight line going by from Wilkins Way to um the street that's coming off, the new street that's proposed. That is um, although it might be straight, it's downhill.
Uh-huh.
So to me, the sight line is the tree canopy, it's not the tr- it's not the road that's coming out from the, to the proposed lane.
Yeah, you, you, would, would you like to address that, sir? Um you, you're talking about the, the, the distance between Wilkins and.
Not so, not the distance, the pitch of the road, it's downhill.
Sir.
Pitch of the road, yeah.
So there's a, there's a crest back, back in here, no, it's, it's after Wilkins Way. It's between Wilkins Way and where the Nemrocks is, it's starting, it's going downhill. Okay.
Two of Wilkins is, Wilkins Place?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, there you go, I think that's where he's talking about.
Okay, the, the, the car, if you walk back to this direction here, you can see past this, you can see over the crest, or through the crest, to the side driveway. We, we put a cone out in the, at the side driveway, and we walk back until we can't see the cone anymore, when the cone disappears.
So, so you took that into consideration?
We, so we took the grades of, of this into consideration, exactly.
Bear in mind that I think Larry takes it a three point five feet off the ground now, and I.
Two, like five feet from the, right, eye, eye of the driver, there in the, eye of the driver.
Okay. Okay, you said you walked back, I got the mental impression you were just standing there, okay.
Uh no.
You walked it back, I get you.
And we have a quote that we said, we go, she crouched down.
Gotcha.
So I, I have another question, did you take into effect the queuing of the cars from one thirty, from Tenny Street to one thirty-three? Because those back up now, there's like three or four cars, um you know, you're pulling out because you're waiting for the traffic on one thirty-three, so it might not be, I mean, it has to be self the traffic coming out of this development, but you're still waiting to get onto one thirty-three.
Uh we did not expand the study area um any further than what, what I, what I spoke about.
You could, yeah, I mean, you could talk, most of the neighbors are in the pressure that, you know, even now, you can almost use a blinking light there.
Yeah.
But I believe the state actually came in recently, and made improvements at that location, I'm sure they would have taken, they generally don't build something for today, they make projections of ten to fifteen years, they take into consideration of future traffic growth in the area. Um so you're talking about this intersection uh one thirty-three at uh.
Right.
At Tenny Street.
Right.
Um again, I believe they made improvements within the past five years, I think, if not six years.
I don't think the s- well, no, that, it's been within, within five years that that design's been there, so it hasn't been that long. It, it used to be just, just a good shootout, and now there's a little island there.
Right, and that was uh, that was.
And you could also pull over, if you're on, if you're on East Main Street, one thirty-three, heading in an eastward direction, there's now a place where you can pull over.
Right, so I, I guess my point is that um, one, we didn't evaluate the intersection. Uh two, uh there were improvements that were made by just the town then?
Yes, it was the town.
Wasn't supported by the state?
When Mirror, no, I don't think so. When Mirror developed the big apartments complex on an arena way.
That was part of.
They were obligated.
Yeah, that was the, so our, our, our road surveyor was involved with it, but that was it.
Okay.
Some, some developers do improvements in towns
Right.
as mitigation for their impact that, that they have.
Yeah.
So the, the additional traffic.
They offer them. What they do.
They do it.
Yeah, without.
They do it.
Without.
Well, they're usually looking for wait, and it's kind of a, a give and take then.
I've got, I can't speak too much about the operation here, uh 'cause I didn't evaluate that location, and it, someone recently looked at this location, and they base their, their engineering uh judgment on what the design should be here.
Well, I haven't sat in traffic trying to get out of one thirty-three.
You have not.
No, I said they haven't, whoever s- whoever did the analysis.
Um.
So would that be a B and a C?
Well, I mean, they're an engineer, they, they, they probably did similar thing that I did, is they went into the counter traffic, they observed traffic during the peak periods, they looked at the accident history. Um and that they, they can't just go up and build something, they have to, have a frame and stamp it, um so I'm guessing that they did, they did observe the traffic at the location. Uh back to the point of how it relates to this project is. When the design is done, they ju- they make projections, and if it was done within the past two years, they've probably made a ten or fifteen year projection deciding what to do with this location. One of the things they probably did, what they did, they probably looked at is a tra- a traffic signal warranted for this location, and my guess is that they came up and said that it wasn't, because it's not a consistent daily flow of eight hundred vehicles or more on one thirty-three, or a day or two of the day.
An interesting point would also be, if there was increased queuing, as you say, what would we do about it? Um how would we do it? You just can't add a light to Route one thirty-three.
No, 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 I mean, that's.
State highway.
But the point is, it's gonna be, add any traffic to it, it's just gonna make matters worse.
We can certainly look into it, um is that something the board wants to see, data about the, the queuing? From a, from a perspective, um you're probably not gonna wanna hear this, but personally, I uh, I don't see the impact. I'm looking at delays that are on the order of three seconds, and uh, from the study area, from the study area, and I don't wanna debate that, and risk reading the report, and traffic issue doesn't seem to be that great, and my perspective, I'm looking at the possibility of uh some of these streets being one ways to improve, like. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, sir.
Uh Jack Grossline, uh it's not so much the delay there, it's the danger, it's the very dangerous intersections, and you take your life into your hands just commuting to work every day. That Marlboro intersection, you have line of sight issues in both directions, it's a nasty, nasty intersection. Um I'm curious that, you mentioned you had two accidents only reported in five years, what, what intersection was that?
So there's two accidents for the Malboro Road and one accident for uh Searl Street at uh, at Tenny Street.
Okay, um maybe they were the two accidents, the one I noticed about three weeks ago, pickup truck slid down Marlboro Road in the, in the ice storm, and uh somebody hit him coming on Tenny Street. And then I was coming to, we're on our way to a con con meeting, uh it was in the last four or five months, and someone had an accident at that same site, so not all the accidents might, might be getting reported, but, but I think there's a lot more than two accidents going on in a five-year period just in that intersection alone. You've got accidents, you know, Searl Street, you've got um head-on issues, uh you've got accidents at the Searl-Tenny intersection, you've got accidents at one thirty-three and Tenny. Um it's uh, I, I mean, you're, a- any in, significant increase in development is going to lead to more accidents, uh there's no question about that. And I, I gotta tell you, I, I hope none of you have to teach a son or a daughter how to drive coming out of this development, it, it's not easy, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult place currently. So we're going to be exacerbating an existingly difficult situation.
I, I would ask um what you would have the board, the applicant, do to mitigate this? And uh it doesn't sound as though there is a mitigation, it sounds to me as though the Marlboro-Tenny Street intersection, the, the dangerousness, if you will, of it is caused by um an embankment that is
Right.
held on privately held land.
Yeah.
And um there's not too much we can do about it, um unless you're proposing that the, the neighborhood um get a citizen's petition to take that land by eminent domain, so that we can cut it down. I mean, literally, that would be what you would have to do, you would have to take that land by eminent domain.
It's a good question, I. I don't. Right.
And I, given this report, I would say that you, you know, if you have the data to support that.
I'm not.
I think the, the warrant's closed, so you're probably waiting for Fall Town meeting.
I'm not pretending to be a track, traffic expert, as I'm sure you've.
Oh, not either, this guy is.
Uh but I'm, maybe, uh in, in Europe, they do this a lot, putting a mirror, a large mirror up across the street, maybe you do a one, consider a one-way thing there. Maybe you consider a, a, I don't know, temporary blinking light in the morning during commuting times on Tenny and one thirty-three. Uh I'm, I'm, I'm sure there are a number of things that, I just don't want us to be jumping and say, yep, we, since we don't have any solutions to make it better, let's just approve the project and move straight ahead.
You say a temporary blinking yellow light or something, or a red light, is there a stop sign?
There's a stop sign on uh Malboro Road, yeah.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Uh are there any other comments tonight? Uh, are there any other comments tonight?
Kevin Duncan, forty-sixth Searle Street. When I did have my daughter, and I had to teach her how to drive, I made it all the way down Searle Street, did it all the way around, because it is dangerous. The reason everybody goes right there, because if you try to go left, you're going head-on. So when you go right, you have to be ready to hit the gas, you look, been driving for a hundred years. Look, look, and you hit the gas, and you kind of hope. They have nothing to do with the development, it's just the way it is there. Just so you know. It is dangerous.
I would certainly hope that this traffic report could be forwarded to the Traffic Committee. Have we sent this in PDF form?
I don't think we have one.
Oh, believe you do, I believe it.
It used to be, but I don't think they've built it, they don't have members anymore.
The Highway Department may do it.
Yeah.
We got this in PDF, didn't we?
We can, we can send it to you in PDF.
Sure.
I, I've scanned it in PDF, if you can send an original, so.
Does the police department have?
It reproduces better.
Do you want me to?
Police Department have any more records in five years?
We generally only go back three years. Uh, in this case, we went back five years.
Did they refer, did they let you know that they had more?
Oh, I'm sure they have more, but does it, does it?
You didn't ask.
Well, there's a time period that you don't, you know, it's, it becomes moot, so, you know. Again, generally, it's, it's actually Mr. Stanley that looks back three years.
Yeah. Well, I think what it, whether it is why it's, why it's safe in five years, a lot of these people, or most of them, have been living in town longer than that. And once you've been there for a while, you know what the route is, and you know what causes you have to watch. But new people coming in, it's gonna be a different story. They're not gonna know those roads. They're not gonna know the danger points.
They'll figure it out faster.
Yeah, I guess so, because that's my concern.
Yeah, I mean, the other option.
Teddy, excuse me, Teddy Street is a hill. Now, you can't tell me, there's, there's gotta be more accidents, uh, skidding, sliding, on bad weather, on, on that hill. There's, I just can't, mad on that.
We sent a letter into the Police Department, and we got information back. Um, we asked for two thousand nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, those are complete years, five complete years.
It's as good as it's gonna get for data. It's a report.
We've got three more public hearings.
We have three more public hearings. Any more comments from the public, please, nothing that's been repeated already? And, uh, it sounds to me like we're gonna be continuing this hearing. And, uh, when did we continue the last public hearing to? Because I don't wanna.
April ninth.
So, um, what's our schedule looking like for, um, brain freeze, for, um?
March twenty-sixth is full of all the bylaws.
That's the bylaws, right? That's all the bylaws.
Continuation of the bylaws, and then we're hearing a citizens petition in.
Not that night.
Um, Harmony Lane on a street acceptance.
Um, I'll accept the motion to continue to... May fourteenth.
Yep.
Twenty-fourteenth, that's a good night, right? I'll accept the motion.
You're skipping all of April?
All of April.
I thought April was, April was, we have one on the ninth already, the twenty-third, we're gonna be dealing with all that.
The twenty-sixth is, is March.
Oh, March twenty-sixth?
Right.
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm sorry.
We need to be done with everything in that meeting for town meeting.
For town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, so that would.
So you have a bylaw. Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, sounds good. Four twenty-three? Is there a motion for that, so moved by Tim?
Seconded.
Seconded by Tilly. That should give you more than enough time to, um, get back to the con con with our information, and we'll see some revisions.
When is your con con meeting?
Seventeenth of April.
Cool. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I want to note for the board that provided in the packet is, um, correspondence from the engineer dated March sixth. The letter that was first discussed dated March sixth, and you have a half-size set of the revised drawings.
Great. Uh, we'll now open the, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Um, now open the, um, continuation for the East Main Street Recreation Facility. This continued on February twelfth, two thousand fourteen. This is a continuation of, uh, East Main Street Recreational Facility.
Oh. You're next.
There are a lot of changes, I think it may be, Jimmy, you wanna just real quickly?
I, I received a letter from, um, Wade, Elizabeth Wade.
Who's the Wade?
Requesting, um, continuation to the March twenty-sixth meeting.
March twenty-sixth. March twenty-sixth, yeah, that's, that's, that's not good. How about we do East Main Street when we do, um...
Jefferson?
Yeah, how's that sound, Jefferson, the East Main, it sound like a good?
Do you have the?
Actually, this is a special permit, right?
Yes.
Do you have the, you started with a new engineer, right?
Yes, we hired a new engineering team.
How far along are they?
Pretty, they're, they're pretty far along, they're, they're meeting with Howard tomorrow.
Yeah.
The meeting, um, I think you've given a pool to meet with Graham.
No, uh, I, I encouraged him to, to meet with the board first, since it's a new engineer.
That's probably one of the reasons, the first thing I'll ask for is whether they can sit down with Graham and talk about the issues at hand. But they've done, they've done work, so.
Uh, he, the, the new engineer's requested past meeting minutes, past letters of correspondence, um, so he's gotten himself up to date.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Do we need a Form H?
I got a Form H, it's in your mailbox.
Yeah, I do.
We're all set with that?
Yeah.
Kind of a motion by, uh, motion to, um, extend the, um, time for approval. What's the date on that?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. So moved by Tim. Seconded by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, you signed, and Tilly, you need to sign, right? Okay, great, um, anything else?
No, what is the date, so I can notify?
Thirty of the June.
That wasn't, that, that was a contin, that was the extension, that's the Form H, nothing to do with continuation.
Oh, sorry. Hey, well, everything else all set?
Uh, I can't think of anything else, new engineer's coming in.
Okay.
Uh, can I have a motion, continued hearing? Motion to continue, and, um, let's go four nine, how's that sound? We'll have Jefferson go up, we'll have this. Should be able to manage that.
Well, he's got.
Attention to both of them, right? What's up, Tom?
You think your engineer will be?
He's got it extended till June thirtieth here, on the extension time.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so what are you saying?
Extension for decision. That's already set, you've signed, next issue, continuation of the hearing.
The reason I ask is, if that's not a realistic time.
No, he possibly could have made it for this meeting, but he wanted to go over and be clear on all the variances that were issued, and all the ones that were waived, so.
Doesn't sound necessary.
Sit down with you on some of those issues.
Yeah.
So what's your other date?
Because he knew that there was quite a bit going on, he just wanted to be sure about this. But he's done all the engineering on the road and stuff.
Did he fill in for the, what, who hadn't put in, like, the surrounding properties that Larry had asked for?
Um, they got, he, they've, he's got a copy of Larry's notes, and I don't know how far along he is discussing the issues with Harry, with, I mean, with Graham.
My understanding is, is my meeting with them tomorrow, him, is, is really to give more of, of a real person's take and understanding, instead of the black and white letters, why these things have occurred, as opposed to just being, show this, show that. To add a little bit more of an understanding for him, so he can take the next revision to the drawings.
Square this up and move it along.
Oh, I definitely wanna move this along. Really.
Yeah. Square this up and move it along.
Oh, yeah.
With the new, new design, new, new calculations, new water calc, runoff, square that all up.
Is he, is he gonna try and deal with the water runoff situation?
Yeah, he is, he is, he's got, he's got, um, he's got simulation programs, and he's doing it, and...
Great.
I don't know which, I don't know which, which one he's actually going to recommend. I will know when that's probably after, maybe talk, maybe he wants to talk to Howard about this, those possibilities.
Sorry.
And he'll present those to Graham. And he says Graham has an issue, hopefully before the meeting, he'll ask him what part of the simulation he doesn't agree with.
Larry came up with like a thirty-five or some percent increase in water. Who had said it was gonna be a five percent reduction, so.
This might be forest pavement all the way to the street, baby.
Yeah, I don't know what.
See what happens.
We talked about a number of different solutions. Um, he said he was gonna go back and, there are a hundred twenty-one engineers at this company, so they'll go back and talk about it. They'll come up with a solution, or two, so.
Yeah, a couple of good ideas, get some heads in it.
Did you have any discussion about the soils, testing the soils at the parking rack?
No, testing the soils down there?
Yeah.
No, we didn't discuss testing the soils.
No.
I'll accept the motion to continue the hearing to April ninth, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Oh, I heard Bob first. Bob moves it. Seconded by Tim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And, um, that's seven, seven o'clock, we have to name a time.
Okay, so I'll tell him four nine is seven.
Four nine.
Okay.
Four nine, right?
Oh, well, he can tell him.
Yeah, he's gonna tell them, thank you, Jimmy.
Okay, thank you.
Next stop is one, continuation of one oh five rear East Main Street Sight Plan Approval. Now you're coming.
Yeah.
Continued from February twelfth. Great. Um, we have, uh, a bunch of comments from Larry Graham. Where are we kids looking at?
It's gonna be under correspondence.
Yeah. Correspondence. And...
Should be.
Yep. Safely reviewed, report S one, dated Feb. twenty-sixth, right? And, um, what do we have, is this the latest in the greatest hour?
Yeah.
Up on the screen?
Yep.
Great. Um, we can hit it pretty quickly. Has, has everybody seen the February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen letter from Larry? Are we there? And it's, uh, where is it?
February twenty-eighth?
February twenty-fifth. Right after, yeah, this is for Hydraulics Plus, right? February twenty-fifth. And it's, it's date stamped, received twenty-sixth.
And right after it will be a response email from the applicant's engineer.
Oh, I got it, yep.
Provided in your packet is an eleven by seventeen copy of what you see up on the screen.
Yep. It, uh, it looks to me as though, um, everything's been addressed in all of these comments. The only issues that I saw, Sal, good luck.
This is the first one, uh, was that addressed?
Let's, um, take them one by one. February twelfth board meeting, and we have the letter, do you have the letter? Your response letter you sent, Howard?
Response letter is an email, immediately following Larry Graham's.
It is March sixth.
Yeah.
He did put the septic system up there.
It showed, right? Oh, okay. Septic system shown as, uh, as the Asbilt plant on file with the Georgetown Board of Health. Okay, um, second, although not involved in the site plan review for Honeydew Donuts. Application of the balance of the building appears that the plant for hydraulics is the plan used for the previous applicants. As such, there were some overlaps, details not necessary, which actually distract from the, um, application. The board in any given approval will have to provide separation of the plan approval from previous stand approvals. This plan, and the response from your engineer, this plan was derived from the Honeydew Site Plan, and he details the notes on the plan developed required by the board during the Honeydew review, and not yet built by the developer are shown as items of work still to be done. Items required by Honeydew approval were completed, they are shown as part of the existing conditions now.
I thought the board derived at the last meeting, the only outstanding item left over from the Honeydew approval was the landscape lines.
Yes.
In the, in the parking area.
Yeah. Um, I did notice when I went to Honeydew at some point during the week, that, um, we are missing some signs.
Really?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're missing the, uh, according to this plan, if you pull up on the, on the left-hand side there, it says, what is it, RX and RU? Or RZ and RU, how does that work? RZ and RU, and I hate these small plans, but those signs aren't showing, to my knowledge.
What RZ and RU, what's?
Deliveries in the rear.
Get over here and.
RZ, RU, RU.
Yeah.
It's got two.
RU is deliveries in the rear. And RZ is no, no, turn-off engines, no idling. The RZ was an important one to the abutters, for recall from testimony, that was something that they had asked for, I'd like to respect that. Again, I, I don't see that.
I'm gonna buy signs, I'll buy them and, I mean, two more signs.
Yeah, it sounds like that. Larry had also, and with, with the permission of the board, um, just about everything here has, has been addressed until we get to the end.
I'll make sure RZ and RU signs.
Yep, um, the proposed, uh, RU delivery and rear sign at the exit location opposite the face of the main building should be made up with arrows pointing northerly, alerting drivers that their access to the rear is at the northerly end of the building. I think that was misunderstood, um, or in some way misinterpreted, especially number seven here, where Larry says he recommends two additional signs be placed at the rear access point, northerly end of the building opposite the face of the building. He's saying one should read deliveries with an arrow pointing, and the other should read access to one oh five R Hydraulics Plus.
That's where the liquor store is.
Exactly, but that your engineer seems to have represented, Howard, can you pull over a little bit with the screen and go up there to the top? It, it seems as though the, they, they misinterpreted it.
These should be down over here.
So you wanna move that out front?
Yeah, those need to go down.
Just write that down, it's like.
Yeah.
Okay, so the access to one oh five.
That needs to, to go down there, and deliveries on the side of the building.
Yeah, we move that up to front of the, right, the side of the.
Those need to go, so, in other words, as you make that new entrance, and you come in, you're saying, oh, should I cut across there for?
We'll be right in line with the front of the buildings there, right?
In other words, you're gonna look at that Georgetown liquor sign there, and you're gonna see, oh, I wanna go to hydraulic, oh, I go that way. And, oh, I'm making deliveries, I go that way. I think they, the engineer just misunderstood with the reference to northeast side of the building and stuff like that. That's all I saw. Anybody else?
No, no, I just wanna note for the board that I put a draft condition of approval on there.
Yes.
And, um, I can just, um, amend it to reflect these two items and take the word draft off if, if you're fine with everything else.
Yeah, I, I didn't get a chance to really pore over it, I kinda blew through it. Was that public hearing three? Yeah.
And what I would like to suggest to the board is that, since it's just administrative on the board sense, you could give a conditional of approval, and at the next meeting, with these two items addressed on the my wire, you can sign then.
Yeah, it sounds like we can, well, to me, to me, I'm, I'm good with approving it at this point. You know, you gotta change a couple of little things there. The only issue I have is, uh, that the islands aren't in, and, uh...
Yeah, she, you, you, she, she gave me a, 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 um, a letter that I can keep, I can, I can email you a copy from the landscaper, I guess, get the price, and I guess he's gonna start the, probably the second week in April, getting in.
Okay. So maybe it might start between now and the next meeting.
This is prime planning time right now.
Yeah.
If you're an icicle.
If, if you can provide that she's gotten a recent quote, and maybe that will show for the board that there's the intention to move forward with.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll email it to you.
I thought we weren't extending any conditionals. What happened, Chair, when you changed your mind?
No, I, I didn't say I was voting for it.
I'm not saying you're, you're...
I'm not hearing anybody making a motion either, at this point. I'm listening, I'm not hearing anything.
We get caught when we do conditionals, I don't think it's...
No, Tilly, that's not a, that's...
That's not a condition?
No, it's different than what you're talking about with one sixty-one, this Main Street. You're giving him a conditional approval that in two weeks, you'll be signing all the documents. Or you can wait till the meeting in two weeks and vote with the documents there. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Well, it wouldn't make any difference from his standpoint. I mean...
You can't record it, you can't move forward till we record it anyway. You need, you need same Mylars to move forward anyway. So by the time you get it printed, we'll all be saying it's the same. One trip to the registry of deeds, as opposed to two. Doesn't matter, oh my love. Anything else anybody wants to see on the plans? Any, any concerns from the Butters in the audience? Any, uh, comments from the planner?
No.
Wendy, you have any? Okay.
Do you wanna close the public hearing, or keep it open till the next?
I'm never in favor of closing a public hearing. You get hit by a bus, we're out the door. Seen it happen before, seen a lot of conditionals go through. I can think of a house on North Street, on, on Elm Street that wouldn't be there right now. If it wasn't for closing a hearing before you had anything signed and, and certain, ready to rock. You get a timeline there. I'm not in favor of closing the hearing. I'll hear, I'll hear a motion to be a fair chair, if anybody wants to make a motion.
I mean, you, really, we can't, I can't open because of two islands?
I'm one vote, sir.
I mean, that's, I, I think it's...
One vote, I've been burned.
I think it's preposterous, I mean, I...
I think it is too.
You know?
I think it is too, I think it's absolutely preposterous that this board signed off on that.
Industry.
Before it happened. But anyway, that's just me, that's my, my thing.
You know, this...
Does anybody wanna make a motion to, um, close the public hearing?
I just wanna understand exactly what your, what's the consequences of closing the public hearing?
Consequences of closing the public hearing is that you, this board needs to issue a decision within twenty-one days. Snowstorm happens at the next meeting? This board doesn't have a quorum at the next meeting? Well, then we can't act, then we can't sign anything, we can't approve anything, and then all of a sudden, it's a wide open approval.
Well, we're not, we're not gonna prevent him from being able to move in to his shop. We're not gonna hold him up until the islands are done, right, the landscaped islands.
That's not your intention. I understand that. I understand that.
But that's what's gonna happen, right?
I have no way to predict the future, sir. I don't know what the other board members are gonna go for. I only know how I'm gonna vote. Let's see what comes to next. Is there a motion to continue the hearing?
Sure.
Okay.
Till the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Cause this shouldn't be, uh...
And at the next meeting, you'll have Mylars and, and the decision to sign.
That's, that's my understanding. And that will be, motion continue, two, three, twenty-six, fourteen, is there a second for that continuation?
Yeah, the twenty-sixth.
Is there a second for the, second from Tim, uh, from, from Bob? But Tim makes a motion, Bob continues, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, hearings continue to March twenty-sixth.
But she won't have the islands done, but...
No, that, that... It's all mattered, at the next meeting, signing the decision, signing the, the Mylar.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting confused.
Don't be confused, just go with it, dude.
Well, he's gotta make plans as to...
Well... Yeah, that's...
I think it's only fair.
Yeah, we took her word for the first of April, and now there's a letter you gave us.
No, no.
No?
I think this, I think this, excuse me, excuse me, everyone, this hearing was just continued, we cannot have this discussion right now.
We didn't vote, yeah.
We cannot have this discussion, yes, we did, motion carried, hearing was continued.
I never voted. You, no.
Three people did.
Three that, then three, the motion did not carry the name.
I didn't even hear it, I'm right next to you.
Let me reflect that. It was three to, uh, zero to one extension.
And this is...
Sorry, I, I thought you were...
So it's gonna come down to a matter of really of whether or not...
What part of, we can't discuss this, cause the hearing's over, don't you doubt? I am now opening the hearing, the continuation for... And it's getting later, kids, six Noreen away, site plan approval.
I'll give Stephen a call tomorrow and tell him the, the items that need to be changed, and he can send me a Mylar.
It'll all, it'll all work out, you will, trust, it's gonna work out. Gonna work out.
My name is Greg. Yeah, I didn't sign in. I didn't sign in.
Yeah, all the sign and chips are over there, and they highlighted to which one you are...
Yeah, Brian Murray.
How I added my mother about a streeter?
Yeah.
No, no, oh, that's too bad.
Yeah, and I looked at it, I said, we have to move it, I mean, but...
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen, running really, really late here. Really late tonight.
I'll sign in after we're done here.
That's fine, thank you.
It's, uh, Lisa Lane.
Oh, no, it's too small for me to look at. I can't, I can't stand these little plans.
Oh, yeah.
I like a real plan. But, anyway, um, opening the hearing for the continuation of the site plan approval, this was continued from February twelfth, two thousand fourteen. And, uh, let's see what we have, we have some comments back from Larry.
Comments back, uh, from Larry and comments from Millennium Engineering.
And that would be after the one we just discussed, right?
Uh, no, before. You received an eleven by seventeen copy in your packet of the latest drawings?
So that's under correspondence, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
It's right after the letter from D H C D.
Maybe we oughta break these packets down into individual packets. Maybe when, maybe, maybe we should break them into individuals, cause this is tough.
That's the letter from Smith. It's, uh, it's, uh, you need to keep going backwards.
Jefferson Court, this is before Jefferson Court's letter. Got it. Looks like this. And it's, it's, it's three or four pages after the yellow sheet that says correspondence.
And the date on it?
Uh, the date on it is February twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen.
We, yeah, we provided a response, March fourth on it, which is essentially Larry's comments, and then just quick bullets from us after that. We're essentially in agreement with what he said in his comments on it. The one change, plan change that came from that was the labeling of the building. He wanted to see a, previous, we swapped in the proposed changes to the building addition, the, um, storage area was originally in the back of the building. And the vehicle maintenance was in the, uh, front part of the proposed addition. That's been switched with the new architect involved in it, and a reworking of how the mirror wanted it done. So, um, he asked us to just label the proposed addition on vehicle maintenance area, which we have done on the plans on it. Other comments, uh, from Larry on that were, uh, essentially just describing what, what the new building additions were and what the changes were to it. I think one comment he put in there was relative to the distance from the edge of the new building location to the pavement area.
What, twenty-five to twenty or something to that effect?
Twenty-five to twenty on it. We have a, an essentially a one-way pattern, is gonna be the proposed movement out there as we discussed during the approval process on it. So we feel there's sufficient width, width with the twenty feet to move through that area on it. So, I, I think that's all the, what Larry was talking about technically in his review on it. I know the board had a concern about us showing the proposed building addition on all the site plans. Which we have submitted those to, uh, Howard on it, so those changes have been made, and we have provided all of the site plans from Mylars, if you intend to sign all eight of them on it. Previously, you signed the one cover sheet on it for the previous site plan approval. So, uh, so either way, I think we covered that with the, with the Mylars we provided.
You marked the storage areas on the sheet?
Yeah, the vehicle maintenance area was the one.
That, that one and the storage area?
Yes.
One, two, and three.
Yeah, yeah, and so those are shown on the, the...
The cover sheet?
The cover sheet, sheets one, two, and three.
And the grading plan.
Yep.
Interestingly enough, I did seem to notice that, um, the older plan didn't, didn't show the proposed addition, uh, the five hundred and eighty-two square foot...
That's correct.
Front addition, I noticed that on the plan.
Right.
Doesn't seem to be a problem, according to Larry, it's over, uh, an already existing impervious area, so it doesn't change any of the stormwater calculations at all.
The purpose of that's for an elevator shaft, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For people to access offices on the second floor.
Sounds like a great idea. The only concern I do have, that I notice personally, and it sounds again like Larry's pretty good with it, um, I'm not seeing, um, the plan that shows the fence. Where, where did that fall off?
It's the second one that's right here.
Hate these small plans, my apologies if it's there.
It's okay.
I'm very sorry.
I don't like them either. You're on the utility plan?
I'm looking at what's, yeah, what's labeled as utility plan, if that's number two.
Right up there in the, in the...
Oh, okay, proposed six-foot chain link fence, one eighty-five linear feet installed to minimize tree removal. Okay, okay, that is being shown, great. Does anyone have any concerns about the plans per se? See any changes that they'd like to, to see? I, I don't think that Larry's recommending any further revisions to the plans. Is he?
I think the one recommendation...
We offer no objection to the board approving the requested site plan modification.
Yeah, he did make, I think he did make a reference to the twenty and twenty-five foot that you may wanna note in the approval document about that. That was the only other thing I could think of.
Yeah, that was the one right before that, that paragraph right before, it should be seven, or something like that. Oh, eight, excuse me. Uh, revised plan provide a scaled distance of twenty plus or minus feet from the northeast lee corner, the proposed addition of the proposed edge of pavement previously approved plan provided a twenty-five foot plus or minus distance from this port. Revised plans do not propose any change to the proposed easily edge of the pavement in the area. Any additional approved, any approval action by the board should probably include some phraseology, but the modified site plan approval does not include any proposed changes to the lines and limits of our areas. Uh, it's shown on the plan, and I believe your response in the, in the letter, from what I recall, was that, um, basically you looked at it as though you didn't need any more distance, so you wouldn't...
No, yeah, we're, we're comfortable with what we have, we don't wanna expand in that area.
And Lenny, Lenny, you've learned how to drive since, you can make that claim, right?
I'm learning.
Shall we move to the decision, gentlemen, uh, folks, everyone? Good, let's go to the decision, and that's in another portion of the packet, you found that earlier.
Yeah, that's at the end. It's under, behind public hearing number five.
Okay, at the very, it's the last one, great, okay. Just like the night. I made two markups, sorry I didn't have time to get them to you. It was a crazy week. The only changes, the only things that I looked at, um, page four of six. Sorry, it's getting late. Uh, at the very top of the page C, after the appeal period, the applicant will record the certified decision. Uh, and assign Mylar plans at the registry of deeds. If I'm not mistaken, the old set of plans actually had, uh, like, sheet one, A two, B, they, they were labeled...
Right, we had architectural plans, and we had some overall site plans that you, you wanted on those.
And, um, I just think that the board should decide tonight, and we should include in there, uh, an actual list of the, the titles to these, because they're not numbered. And you can't just number them, one, two, three, four. You're gonna have to say, record cover sheet, record utility plan, record the grading plan. You're gonna have to actually lay that out in the decision, so that we know that you've done it, and, and there's one called the lighting plan. Do we want the, is there a planting plan?
Yeah.
Oh, really, I didn't even see that one. Lighting and, oh, lighting and planting plan, excuse me, good catch. Erosion control details. Underground storage details, all of these things, uh, can we name them, and actually, there's two of them that have the same name. They're both called underground storage details. They're both of the same name. So maybe on that Mylar, we can put an underground storage, just make an A on it or something?
Sure.
And we have the Mylars to sign? Do we have Mylars tonight?
Yeah.
Do we have Mylars?
Yeah.
Everybody cool with this? Are we, it's ten minutes of ten, I don't wanna jam anybody, are we all good with this so far?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is all repeating from the first decision, right?
Yeah.
Pretty much so, yeah, basically. The only, the only, again, the only, the only changes I would, I would add is that, um, you know, we would, we would call out each one of, what is it, eight pages, nine? What is it, Howard?
Do we have to register all of them?
Eight civil plans, yeah. If that's, that's what the board's deciding right now, if you just...
Well, yeah.
Do we have to register all these?
The first application, it was just the cover sheet.
Yeah. But I think that was an oversight. That was something that wasn't mentioned, yeah.
Oh.
Because you have this here, and if you just record the cover sheet, well, there's no fence, there's no reference to the... Stormwater system, there's no, um...
It references a set of plans that you have, that, so, within the, the planning board that need, need to be followed.
Typically, it seems like we only sign one.
Right.
Yeah.
As long as there's a reference to each and every...
If the board's comfortable with that. If the board's comfortable with that.
What does a site approval say?
We can tell we've always done it.
Site approval.
What does that, you know?
I think it's a heck of a good point, Tony, as long as there's something that connects each one of these pages to the cover sheet. It's a unique, some kind of a unique identifier. Well, CIT guy.
Actually, I, that, that's part of what I'm talking about, because see, on the front page right now, it's showing a plan index. And it's saying sheet ones, the cover sheet, sheet twos, the utility plan, and then it goes on to seven and eight, which are the details, it talks about S one, S two. I don't know, it might be a little confusing, I don't know. That's why I look at it as though it's just easier to call them out.
Oh, I see.
The ones you want, the ones you want done. To me, from my perspective, the only important ones are the utility, the cover sheet, the utility plan, and, um... Yeah, but the only ones that need to be recorded in the lighting and planting plan, cause that shows the screening for the neighbors. I think if the three of them are sorted, fixes me up.
Okay, fair enough, three, three on it?
Yeah.
Three sheets, the first three sheets.
There we can call those three out, Howard, on the, um...
You don't think drainage details or...
And I think those impact your Butters, that we wanna look at.
There's different details on each one.
Your Butters are the ones that would probably be going to the registry of deeds. When they're actually building the thing, they've got them.
Is there a facility, though, to associate the cover sheet with specific versions or specific iterations of these underlying documents?
Just, just so that we don't... Recordation at the registry of deeds, and...
Would we need to, to sign each one of them, is that...
Yeah, basically, you need to sign the ones that need to be recorded.
Yeah, yeah.
And the ones that didn't need to be recorded. Pardon?
Yeah, I like signing just the cover sheet. I think, I don't think you can sign it in any of these following, following pages.
Um, I, I think you can. It's interesting, I, I look at it as though it's just, um, the ones that are called out for some specific details in the, um... Uh, what's it called, under the special conditions? If they're mentioned as a reference on the special conditions, then it's easier, cause the, the conditions, uh, decision gets recorded. The reference to... then it's easier because the, the conditions, decision gets recorded. A reference to the plan should be reported as well.
That's, I, I tend to agree that if you put it in a decision, a list in a decision, that negates going, recording all the plans on it and.
Yeah, and you know, when you talk about, it says fence material shown on sheet two of eight. Well, you know what? There's no sheet two of eight anymore because we've changed everything around and so.
See what you're saying.
Yeah, it's just because we're, we're not starting this all over, but this is a modification and I want to avoid any confusion. Excuse me. Does the board want to call out some, some of the pages to be recorded or not?
Excuse me.
I'm good with just the cover sheet.
Yeah, I don't want it to lay this.
Okay.
I mean, why change?
We don't really spell it out here.
Then we can just do the cover sheet. Okay. Then there's no change needed there.
Anybody that's really curious, I'm in the planning office.
How do we deal with the sheet two of eight there? Which is the fence material? Is that gonna be all right? And plant material specified on sheet four of eight? That's in the.
Is that like on this one?
Well, it's all in the decision as it is. Do we strike those?
Well, those were conditions that's the last right now.
Right. So, so maybe, what do we do? Kill the references or change what's shown?
Does your cover sheet refer to the, the book and page of, of the originally approved?
We referenced the original approval on it. Yeah.
So you really only need the building, the, the one that has the building.
I think that was the point that was mentioned before was that your concern was to just make sure that the building got shown and, because this is a site plan modification, not a site plan on it. So the idea was to make sure that the, the building change showed up on it. That will show up on the cover sheet. It will show up a little stronger on the second, the, the second sheet and the third sheet. So I, you know, I think it's all covered there on what the, what your intent was there, but I think it's just a level of you want to go.
Conditions. You know, there are special conditions. I don't want to lose them for lack of, you know, including a plan, a sheet. But if the board's happy with the way everything is, I'll accept the motion to.
But there's no, what's, is there any difference between the modification in here? It's just on the plan, right?
Well, that's the point.
Right.
So that's.
That's my point. I mean.
Yeah, you don't really need all, yeah.
Oh.
The top sheet, this sheet. Everything else is the same. And this one should be filed. It shows a building.
So what's your motion, Tilly?
I make a motion to approve a site plan modification. From Mira.
And is that the decision?
And the, and the.
And sign the decision?
Sign the decision.
And the decision is dated, what's, what's it dated there?
Today, isn't it?
Yeah, but I would.
Yeah, it's a draft, so you're not gonna have it.
Take draft off and stuff and you can sign it the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. The, and sign the decision. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Tim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Unanimous.
Thank you.
And just so, well, we've already made the decision, so it's all done. Motion to close the hearing?
Howard, I'll see you. Twenty days. Because I gotta bring that down to the, I can't bring that down till you sign the decision.
No.
What, that has to go with the decision to the town clerk. It's a twenty-day appeal period.
Oh, okay.
In case somebody is unhappy and after that, it gets recorded at the registry.
Motion to close the hearing? Move, second? Second if I vote.
Thank you.
Can I?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that's closed. The only other thing we have is a.
The letter, technical assistance.
Technical assistance?
The open space, yeah, the open space committee and working with the planning office and CONCOM needs to engage Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to complete all the mapping for the open space and recreation plan. And Gerard Witten, who is the GIS contact at Merrimack Valley, has stated that it's gonna take thirty-five hours to complete the rest of the maps. So I just need the planning board to authorize me to fill out the letter of technical assistance, allow me to sign it, and I'll send it on to Merrimack Valley for, for them to get engaged.
Bob, did I hear you make that motion?
So moved.
Oh, okay. You made, you seconded it. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion by Tim. And seconded to have Howard sign it? The LTA request, that's what it's called, Howard, an LTA request?
Right.
Tim, make the motion. Bob seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And you're gonna sign that? Anything else you could think of? Anything?
I have one last question. Was it Mynat that is the thing that all the departments share the use of? Like see how the town is laid out, lots.
It, it's the portal to all the GIS information.
Right. Is, did that end up getting put, like, can anyone in Georgetown go online, like, to the assessor's site or something?
After our budget's approved, we're gonna engage Merrimack Valley to have it, so people can access limited information. What's that?
So we are gonna do that.
Well.
It's West Newberry. I, I have a house in West Newberry. They already have that. You just go to the assessor's website and that's one of the options you can pick. It's kinda neat because you can get the distance between any two.
Sure.
I think you might, I know you said no one would ever use it, but I think.
Limited use. I, I, I was looking at the, the cost benefit from, from a perspective of, is that something we want to spend fifteen hundred dollars more on versus, what was it, five hundred or something? I forget the numbers now at this point.
I thought it was only a couple of hundred bucks more.
No, it's, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year for, for public access to it.
But, hey, sounds like a good thing.
I know in Newport, you can go to any property and you can see lots of great information on it about fire hydrants and floodplain information.
I, I really think it's worth it.
There you go. So moving forward, let's talk about it the next hearing, at the next meeting. Is there anything else? Motion to adjourn by Tim, seconded by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten p.m. adjournment. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
We're just signing the cover sheet, right?
We're just signing the cover.